Okay, good evening, everybody. We'll officially call to order. Se go ani buju indio wachea kuekue. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering, that is bring our good minds and hearts together as one, to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who are entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. Okay, so now that we are underway, first up, I will ask, Mr Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have a quorum.
Okay, we have nothing under Committee of the Whole Closed Meeting. We do have two addits. The first added is a report from the Nominations Advisory Committee, a report from the Ministry of Policies Committee. And then we also, on the second added, have a number of delegations and some motions of convolence. So I will ask for a motion to move both, approve both of the addits, together moved by Deputy Mayor Osteroff, seconded by Counsel Holland. All those in favour? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Counsel Kylie?
Through you, I, Robert Kylie, the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my potential pecuniary interest in relation to Report Number 12 from the Administration Policy Committee, as I have immediate family who operates an Airbnb within city limits. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no other disclosures of pecuniary interest, we will move on. We have no presentations this evening, but we do have a number of delegations. So first, I will invite Alison Young, Project Manager of Kingston Community Health Centers, and Malcolm Ead, CEO, co-founder of Spectra Plasmonics, who will appear before Counsel to speak to Clause Four of Report Number Eight from the CAO with respect to the partnership with Kingston Community Health Centers. And just a note to Alison and Malcolm and to all of the delegations that you have five minutes, and then we'll open it up for questions from Counsel. You have the floor, take it away.
Well, hi, everyone. My name is Alison Young, and I'm the Project Manager at Kingston Community Health Centers. Just wanted to say thanks very much for having me tonight to speak to the exciting partnership developing between KCHC and Spectra Plasmonics, a partnership that we hope will implement a community drug checking program aimed at supporting the clients and the staff with the consumption and treatment services site on Montreal Street. So thanks very much for having me. Next slide, please. Yeah, perfect. Just a quick overview, we'll be going on a bit of a high-level overview on the current climate, what drug checking is and benefits of drug checking. And then Malcolm will take over and talk about the technology, the project, and some future plans that we have. Next slide, please. Wonderful. So just a brief overview of the current climate, which I'm sure you are well aware of. We're seeing a high drug toxicity in our region right now, as well as many, many overdoses. And these overdoses are increasing with complexity due to the toxicity of the drugs that are currently on our street. And we're working, Spectra and KCHC are working to try to address this and bring new technology to our community in order to help address these issues. Next slide, please. So what is drug checking? Drug checking refers to a service that enables people who use drugs to chemically analyse their street-acquired drugs and receive individualised, fact-based consultation regarding the content of their drugs. Malcolm will go into this further. And it's a harm reduction approach, and it seeks to reduce the potential adverse health outcomes of use of drugs without necessarily reducing drug consumption. And drug checking follows the methodology of respecting and accepting where the individuals or service users at, empowering them with the information to make more informed decisions on their use in a compassionate and collaborative environment. Next slide, please. So just a couple of benefits in terms of the drug checking program. It does allow for surveillance or monitoring, and it will help with our public health benefits. It will feed back on the illicit drug supply and allows for rapid public health messaging on a day-to-day basis because it's monitored so quickly. And this will enable early warning systems and signs and insights on substance use trends for our community drug strategy stakeholders, such as KCHC and KFLNA Public Health, the city, among others. In terms of safety, it provides clients with the information to decide on how to proceed with use, for example, how much to consume in a given time. And it allows for staff the opportunity to further communicate and educate clients on the possible and possibly preemptively preparing for any sort of overdose or adverse outcomes. In terms of connection, it allows another opportunity for service users to connect with a service provider or staff at the site, develop further rapport, engage in any new and necessary services and supports that they may need at that given time, starts to build trust, and it also potentially will attract new CTS clients to come into the safer consumption site and increase an uptick of harm reduction supply usage. Next slide, please. Now pass it over to Malcolm.
Thanks very much, Alison, and good evening, everybody. It's an honour to be able to speak with you all tonight about our program. So my name is Malcolm, I'm co-founder and CEO of Spectra Plasmonics. And in my remaining two minutes, I just want to briefly touch on our company's story, our technology, and where we hope to take this beyond Kingston after our pilots. So next slide, please. So some of you may know us. We are a spin-off company from Queen's University with the aim of commercialising chemical detection technology that was invested there. And we're currently one of three finalists in Health Canada's Drug Checking Technology Challenge, one of three across the country to develop a drug checking solution. And so for basically the past year and a half, we've been exclusively focused on the drug checking space and public safety space, which has been a humbling experience and an absolute privilege to be able to do. Next slide, please. We'll touch on this too much. Just like to note and point out, we're working with a couple of organisations right here in our backyard. The Centre of Advanced Computing, on any of the software or database side of things, we're working directly with them to develop the tailored dashboard solution and are supported by our local regional innovation centre, Launch Lab, and are advised by world-class entrepreneurs from South Eastern Ontario. Next slide, please. So this is our drug checking solution. And in a nutshell, in a process that's as simple to use as a test kit, we get comprehensive results that are displayed right in the palm of the user's hand. And the important thing to know about our technology is that we identify samples based off of a unique chemical fingerprint, and that fingerprint then gets translated to the user, back into plain language results. And so...
Thirty seconds. Thirty seconds.
And so, right now, you see on the right side here, it says fentanyl, but it's not just fentanyl, it's other additives, it's mixtures, it's unwanted things. And this is what we hope will prevent disasters and advise people and empower them on what they're taking. And then, of course, the information that we can use will also empower our community drug strategy groups, like KFLNA Public Health. So it seems like my time is up, I will stop it there, but I think that's a good note to leave it off at.
Thank you, thank you very much. Are there any questions from Counsel? That's story.
Thank you through you. Thanks for the presentation. Can you just share with us a little bit more about what, like the moment when you actually, like when you approach a drug user, for example, is it a team of people, a couple of people that go to speak to that individual? And how you make those connections? And how do you kind of, not just speak at the moment, but also further that to create that connection?
Malcolm, do you want to take that one?
Sure, yeah. We work closely with a number of the harm reduction workers at KCHC and are also building our practices off of some of the programs that are happening in B.C. And so I think the first thing to point out is that drug checking is completely voluntary by the client. And so how it would work is, we would have a station set up at the supervised consumption site, and there would be an opportunity for the client to have their drugs checked with an operator. Starting off, that will be Spectra performing the drug checking, and then our aim is to transition that to the harm reduction employees at KCHC. So it's a matter of basically the client looking at the service, going through our disclaimer and consent process, offering a small amount of substance, and then offering those results to that client. And then along the way, and Alison, please jump in here, there will be harm reduction messaging, there will be consultation with KCHC staff on the results so that they can talk to them about the nature of their substance and recommendations on how to deal with it.
Thank you.
And next is Counsel.
Thank you very much. Three Counselors are on KFLNA Public Health Board. And I just want to say, you know, we've heard about the tragedy of the drug epidemic that's going on right now. Have you discussed at all, I know other communities in Canada and especially in Europe have talked about the best way to get to harm prevention is probably to legalise safe drugs for those that are addicted. Is that, and this would seem to me to be the first step in that direction. Would you like to comment on that?
Again, Alison, please jump in here. But my take on this is absolutely, I think this is a first step. I think another effect that this would have is de-stigmatisation, because it kind of opens the box and allows that information to be disseminated to not just the drug user, but also to other groups, if that's what we wish to do. And absolutely, this is one tool in a harm reduction toolbox to, you know, to prevent tragedies and to combat the drug overdose crisis. So, you know, I think it's one part of the solution. I'm not going to say that it's going to be the only solution in the silver bullet, but it's a step in the right direction.
Thank you. And my final question, if I can. You'll be making this data as you find it readily and immediately available to KFLNA, I presume, which is good because usually it's after the tragedy that we now send out warnings to the community that there's a deadly drug out there. How does that protocol work for you?
Exactly. So absolutely, this would be an opportunity to have those early warnings. At the end of the day, what we will be collecting is near-real-time data on the substances. And so if something particularly toxic was detected, then KCHC would have the opportunity to immediately contact KFLNA Public Health, say the device detected a substance with these, with X and Y toxic components, and then be able to make a call on whether that alert needs to be issued. And ideally, this happens before somebody overdoses and, God forbid, has to go into a more dire situation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Is there anybody else? Counsel Chappell?
Yes, thank you, your worship. Malcolm, one of the opportunities that I foresee might be something you can comment on is proving successful here in Kingston and saving lives. Could this idea and concept be transferred to our neighbouring communities like Napanee and Peterborough and other parts of Eastern Ontario, even across the country for that matter? And perhaps would Kingston potentially become a hub for training and sharing this expertise across the country and perhaps even North America?
Yes, and thanks for bringing that up, Simon. There was one slide I was hoping to get to in our presentation, but absolutely, what we hope to do is make this the case study to be able to deploy across the country. And our goal and vision is to become the new de facto standard for point-of-need drug identification and to replicate this success, not just in Kingston, but in the rest of the province, the rest of the country, the rest of North America. So absolutely, this is a huge opportunity to become a leader in this kind of innovation, right in our own backyard.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, thank you both very much. And with how we will go to our second delegation, DJ Fuser from Fair B&amp;B Canada will appear before Counsel to speak to Clause 1B of Report Number 12, received from the Administrative Policies Committee with respect to the supplemental report, Short-Term Rental Licensing Program.
One second. Okay. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. So Fair B&amp;B is a national coalition of tenant, neighbourhood and hospitality groups, legal clinics and academics advocating for fair rules for short-term rentals. And we appreciate the opportunity to comment tonight. We make a strong distinction in our work between true home sharing, where someone rents out their own principal residence to earn extra income, on the one hand, and commercial short-term rentals, where hosts stockpile other homes and take them off the long-term market for use as tourist rentals. And we consider only the latter one case to displace residents. Like so many other communities in Canada, Kingston has been grappling with low vacancy rates and rising rents before the pandemic. And now many households have lost income, and things may become worse as federal support programmes end and deferred rent and debt becomes due. On the other hand, there may likely be more demand for housing and greater pressure on vacancy rates later this year, as hopefully universities and colleges start to reopen. Housing security in this context needs to be top priority. And so we'd like to submit that putting residents in competition with tourists for housing is the wrong thing to do right now. Putting in place strong proactively enforced limits to commercial short-term rentals is one way to protect housing availability and affordability. And we also believe it will help true home-sharing hosts generate needed extra income. So I am happy to share some of these reports. Just last month, with support from the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, Vancouver-based Generation Squeeze published a guide to short-term rental regulations for Canadian cities. And they concluded, "If a community wants to prioritise residents' rights to adequate housing, the most effective approach is likely the restriction of STRs in residential zones to principal dwelling units, i.e. true home sharing." So their guide provides extensive evidence, I won't go through it all, of the impacts commercial short-term rentals have on housing availability and affordability, and they rely on peer-reviewed research out of McGill University. The root of the problem here is that for hosts and platforms alike, it's more lucrative to rent homes as permanent vacation rentals than long-term housing. There's a financial incentive for both parties to continue operating as so-called ghost hotels. And in Kingston, in the midst of the collapse of the tourism industry, someone can still earn, on average, 30% more renting out their apartment in Airbnb than to long-term tenants. And this rises to 126% in the summer. The same data from AirDNA suggests that about 35% of listings in Kingston are available full-time, so currently about 140 homes. By way of comparison, given the currently available vacancy rate, we think Kingston has only around 260 purpose-built vacant rentals. Staff, note that if Kingston's vacancy rates remain lower or sink lower, regulations could potentially trigger a return to a principal residence requirement. However, if we want to prioritise housing security and economic recovery, we could simply reverse the onus. That is, restrict short-term rentals to true home sharing unless and until the city's vacancy rate recovers. McGill University researchers have shown when commercial rentals of entire homes are not restricted, they quickly come to dominate most markets, and this is particularly true in rural areas. And they estimate that by 2018, 31,000 homes across the country had been lost to short-term rentals. In Kingston's case, we're concerned that the amended regs may open the doors wide to commercial short-term rentals. The bylaw proposes a one-operator, one-listing principle. But if the operator's permitted to be a corporation, it could be a simple matter to create different corporate entities to hold each housing unit and thereby stockpile multiple entire home listings. Just last week, US and EU housing advocates published a report taking a close look at cities' experiences trying to regulate Airbnb and found evidence of widespread non-compliance with rules aiming to limit commercial short-term rentals. Illegal listings persist in cities that have had regulations in the books for years, accounting for 80% of listings in Berlin, 60% in Paris, 85% in New York City. And in Barcelona, where Airbnb has an agreement to provide addresses of listings, an estimated 60 to 70% were incorrect. And the authors conclude, "Every city surveyed and interviewed for this report recommended regulations over negotiations."
Three seconds.
Sorry? I'll wrap up. There are other risks to voluntary self-regulation. If only Airbnb discloses host data, hosts may go elsewhere or simply cheat the platform using it to generate leads but concluding deals privately. So we humbly suggest that a true culture of compliance needs to be in place before voluntary self-regulating approaches are even considered, and that trust should be earned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from Counsel?
Thank you, your worship, and through you. Just to follow up on your last comment, you said that trust should be earned. I'm kind of wondering where that comes from. I mean, Kingston has a bunch of STR hosts that really haven't done anything wrong, as far as I'm aware, till this point. And so in saying that the trust should be earned, it's almost like we're treating them like criminals before we're giving them the chance to sort of be treated as honest citizens, which kind of goes against the very nature of how Kingston approaches problems. So would you have like on that?
Sure, yes. And none of my remarks should be construed to reflect on the motivations of commercial short-term rentals. They're doing nothing wrong currently. It's sort of trying to draw attention to the structural incentives that come into place. And when I say trust should be earned, I am talking about the platform in question because I understand there's a proposal to engage in a voluntary agreement with Airbnb to proceed, to do the enforcement of the regulations. And there, I would strongly urge you to look at what city after city, municipality after municipality has said about the difficulties of making that work. You may be able to collect some taxes, but it's very rare that cities report progress on these kind of real tangible housing-related issues.
Just a follow-up question. I'm just curious. Did somebody in particular reach out to you and invite you to speak tonight? Or did you just happen upon?
That's not a question that we entertain here, I'm sorry.
Okay, second follow-up question then. Essentially, would you not say it would be worth the effort to try it through Airbnb and potentially come up with an internal solution for the other portion that aren't with Airbnb, just to see if we could have a successful approach there, even though it may not have worked in other places?
I think it's... It's worrying of other cities and not giving away your right to independent proactive enforcement, given what we've seen at other cities. Of course, you know, you have to find the tools that work right for this, for your situation in your case, you know. But I think the homegrown solution in this case would be to retain those tools and those powers for yourselves, especially given the kind of precarious, like the need to prioritise housing security in this particular moment. And we really do believe that if you are able to limit commercial short-term rentals, it's to the good of all those mom-and-pop home-sharing hosts who are leasing space in their own home to try to earn a bit of extra income. It drives the business towards them.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Counsel Strout?
You may or may not be able to answer this question, but one of the themes that has come up in the committee on the long and repeated discussion on this topic is the suggestion from some of the hosts that the proposed software that the city could obtain through an agreement with a separate company is in fact spying and surveillance. And I wonder if you would like to comment on that assertion?
I think the city has some control over what that contract looks like. But, you know, I also think that we're talking about folks who are offering tourist accommodations to the travelling public. And I've never kind of understood why that needs to be so secretive. You know, if we're basically dealing with a business that's been in place for a long time, bed and breakfast, being mediated through a platform to provide access to new customers. Bed and breakfast has sort of never tried to hide where they are or what they do. And it may be helpful for relations with neighbours if that's sort of more commonly public knowledge. But if there are concerns, you know, that you could likely work those out with a third party.
My other question is more to do with what path we might be going down with the current amended regulation. You spoke to this in your delegation speech. So if we have, what is in that amendment is a requirement for staff to report after four months regarding the status of the negotiations with Airbnb for this voluntary agreement that we've been talking about. What is your estimation of the range of outcomes and what we might expect from such a report?
Well, I mean, one question that occurred to me, and I would urge you to read the... I can send this to Counsel, to the US and EU joint report on the city's experience with short-term rental platforms, is that these agreements are on offer in situations where the cities have adopted regulations that are attractive to the platforms. And I'm curious whether the data-sharing agreement would have been an offer had staff sort of stuck to the original vision for the regulations, which had a principal residence requirement. You know, but I, one thing we've heard in the case of Amsterdam, for example, they were in a voluntary negotiated agreement with Airbnb. Airbnb was removing listings that had exceeded a 60-day cap. Then Airbnb, then Amsterdam moved to tighten those regulations and imposed a 30-day cap on short-term rental use in homes in the city. And Airbnb stopped removing those listings. You know, so there's, it's a real question whether self-regulation in this industry, given the track record of the companies in question, is the right way to start. It may be somewhere where you end up. But again, I feel like the preponderance of evidence suggests that it's, there are risks. And it's a question whether those risks are worth it.
Okay, next is Counsel Ostrout.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and thanks for your surprise delegation speaking here. I'm a little bit disappointed in it, but I suppose it's a very challenging file that we are part of and the decision tonight. And I can see that, and I'm not even sure even tonight we have a complete handle on it. But I quite disagree with you. I mean, Kingston is not Amsterdam, it is not Toronto, Berlin.
So Counsel Ostrout, I'm just going to ask you to get to...
Yeah. The question I have is about your comment. Why would you think that self-regulation is better to do second than first? I would like to know what you comment on about just having stakeholder involvement to evolve that way.
Sorry, can you repeat the last part of your question?
The question I have is really, would stakeholder involvement not be more... The question I have is really, would stakeholder involvement not be more beneficial to begin with self-regulation and decide if it's working? Have them involved in the regulation manufacturing?
In the regulation manufacturing?
Development.
Yeah, I mean, I think they tend to, you know, this is a company with a hundred billion market capitalization and the preponderance of their resources are you know, spent on public relations and government relations because these regulations set by municipalities are so very consequential. You know, just to reiterate, in most markets where commercial short-term rentals are not restricted, they come to dominate the market and they represent the lion's share of revenues for the platform. And so there's a kind of a commercial bent to the regulations they seek. They should be as permissive as possible for short-term rentals, just because that's the way it works. It makes sense if you have an entire home unit that's being rented out two-hundred-and-eighty nights a year and you take a percentage off of that. You know, that's going to be a lot more lucrative. That's going to be the part of the business you try to grow for your shareholders. That is not a model that we've seen that works for cities. Yeah, I think the germ of the idea behind Airbnb, which is having folks share their homes and in a little extra income, there's nothing wrong with that. It's a great addition to a city. It helps people earn extra income, but that represents a very small portion of Airbnb's revenues from most cities. So I think you have to take into account that framework and see the ways in which, you know, cities who are charged with the protecting and defending, you know, housing for residents interests may not be aligned in this situation.
Thank you.
If you may, Ostroff?
Thank you very much.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you. Next is Counselor Neil.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation. I have a couple of questions. This file we've been struggling with for a couple of years now. But I know that originally something that resonated with me was the whole idea that that the information might not be secure with a second-party American company, which was the original plan. Is Airbnb an American company? So would the Patriot Act risks hold equally true of Airbnb? And do they use a secondary company as the city was proposing to do?
Huh, this goes a little beyond what I know about how these things work, but Airbnb is headquartered in San Francisco and traded on NASDAQ. You know, it's from a tax perspective, things are a little bit more complicated, but I imagine data crosses borders, if that's your concern.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that. My final question is just, you cited several interesting studies. Could you, through our clerk's department, make that available to counsel?
Absolutely.
You cited. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Hey, thank you. Are there any other questions? Counselor Schell.
Thank you, Your Worship. How long have you been following the Airbnb process here in Kingston?
We were following it until, to be honest, the the first round of the draft regulations came out. We tried to keep track as much as possible of what's, how regulations are moving in different cities in Canada. And then the pandemic hit. I thought, okay, great, Kingston's on the right track. And it's, I think that's the point where we were paying really close attention. We like to work with and really rely on local housing activists and tenants groups where they're organized to keep an eye on this. As you can imagine, it's been hard for people to kind of do that during the during the pandemic.
The reason I asked that question is that counsel had directed staff to consult with the Airbnb hosts. And the ones that you're describing as positive contributors to the economy, sharing their homes, we're talking, that's the Airbnb hosts that we're talking about that are so greatly impacted. So understanding your perspective, it would have been great to have your input come much earlier since you've been following this since
I agree.
February, we
For show this question? Oh, is there a follow-up question?
My follow-up question is, how did you come to be on the agenda tonight? Because it's been very informative.
So, so Counselor Schell, I've already ruled, we don't ask delegations those questions.
Why not? Why not?
I'm not about to allow that precedent now. Thank you.
Okay, I'll find out from staff.
Are there any other questions from counsel? Okay, thank you very much. With that, we will move to our third delegation. Megan Naught, Executive Director, Tourism Kingston, and Krista Leclerc, Executive Director, Kingston Accommodation Partners, will appear before counsel to speak to clause 1B of report number 12 received from the Administrative Policies Committee with respect to supplemental report Short-Term Rental Licensing Program.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Patterson and members of counsel. Thank you very much for having me here. My name is Krista Leclerc, and I'm the Executive Director for Kingston Accommodation Partners. I'd like to start by thanking city staff and all of those involved in the many, many hours that have gone into this file. Despite the comments made in the media and communicated at Administrative Policies Committee, I'd like to take this time to address many misunderstandings as well as flag some concerns we still have as the Accommodation Sector Association. CAP collects the four percent mat from CAP partners, including roughly fifty properties in Kingston. The mat is not paid by the business, but however, the visitor. We understand the conversation around taxation and representation, which is why we've spoken to city staff and the STR group regarding the Tourism Kingston Board and Marketing Committee. The mat marketing dollars are spent through Tourism Kingston, not CAP. Therefore, STRs are welcome to apply for the Tourism Kingston Board and participate on the Marketing Committee. This has always been the case, as anyone can apply to be on the TK Board or any committee to be engaged in tourism. CAP's mission as the Hotel Association is advocacy and mat collection and compliance. We have full confidence in the Airbnb voices we have heard. They want to register, license, and remit the mat. We are, however, very concerned about those we don't know or hear from. There are potentially five hundred or more others at the moment. How can they be identified to license? How does the city know who they are or what they're using their property for? I urge counsel to be concerned about this beyond whether or not Airbnb sends along a check for mat. A platform like Harmari assists with this using only already publicly available information and is a Canadian company with Canadian servers and Canadian staff. I'd also like to note that no matter what collection party counsel chooses, they all use a third party to collect the mat, including Airbnb. This was identified by Mr. Compo at Administrative Policies. And again, even if Airbnb sends along a check for mat, what about the fifteen percent of STRs on other platforms? What if the hosts we don't have relationships with change platforms? Finally, in regards to Airbnb remitting the mat on behalf of their hosts, I'd like to ask counsel to consider the leakage when repeat visitors book and pay for their stay off of the platform, as this is a common practice. This would continue to be unfair to the accommodation sector, who pay taxes, contribute greatly to the Kingston community, and continue to remit mat for each visitor's stay. Thank you again for all the work that has gone into this file to date, and thank you for your time. I'll now pass it over to my colleague, Megan Naught.
Good evening, counsel. Thanks for the time. I'll just end in Krista's remarks, just to make sure that I reemphasize that Tourism Kingston and CAP have been working hard, obviously, to promote Kingston through the Visit Kingston platform since nineteen ninety-eight. Tourism Kingston does a call, a public call in fact, for board members every fall. And included in that would be the STA owners and operators within the city of Kingston. It's important for our board to have a cross-section of industry to guide strategy. And also to emphasize that the mat which is collected from the visitors goes to fund vital sales and marketing tools, of which, and benefit accommodations, attractions, retail, food and beverage, all the businesses within Kingston that encompass the tourism sector. The mat, because I was involved in it in two thousand and eighteen, was a very straightforward collection process as it rolled out with standalone operators in the non-STA space. And I do believe it can be a very straightforward process in the STA space as well. The DMO already, Tourism Kingston already supports short-term accommodators with several tools. We know many of them. We provide visitor guides, maps, marketing, and we will continue to do so in partnership. With that, I thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the delegation? Counselor.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. Just to clarify, so you mentioned, Ms. Naught, that the STR hosts will be getting a seat on the Tourism Kingston Board. Is that what I heard?
So maybe, yeah, great question. So let's clarify that. So every fall, Tourism Kingston does a call, a public call. So we do that through city channels as well as our industry channels. And we make sure that it's about an eight-week transparent process to suggest that we're losing board members and we'd like to fill these seats. Then we go through the applications and through our HR nomination committee, we come to delegate those that are selected and have terms, one, two, or three-year terms on the Tourism Kingston Board. The Tourism Kingston Board has two appointed counselors, as you know, as well as the mayor, the CIO. Some Krista, obviously, from Kingston Accommodation Partners, as well as five appointed members from the Kingston Accommodation Partner Group. So there's five. And then there's five sort of at-large public spaces. And so we go through this cycle and have for some time, and that is how it, you know, comes. That's how we really recruit our board members. And so at any point, anyone who's interested in the tourism space is encouraged to apply and hold those seats and come to the table in a common voice. I will also make it very clear that we have five committees at Tourism Kingston as well. These committees are anything from meetings and conferences to travel trade, to sport, to film, to marketing and otherwise. And so there's lots of points of engagement, and our annual plan that we present to counsel and report on quarterly comes from a combination of those committees as well as the board. Does that help?
Yep, yeah, that clarifies that. Thank you very much. One follow-up question. If hypothetically we were to go with some type of third-party compliance monitor like Harmari or what was host compliance was the original one, and that were to pass in Kingston, would the STR hosts then be the only part or group of Tourism Kingston and/or associated with CAP that would be monitored and followed in such a way?
No. So of the standalone, and Krista, you can jump in as well. Of the collection process that we have now, every month, the fifty or so operators that remit to CAP are closely in communication with Krista and her office so that they remit on, like, I think it's the twentieth of the following month. And we've had very little to no issue with those standalone properties so far remitting their mat. And their mat is calculated upon occupancy. Occupancy is a public domain. We know at any point in time during a monthly process how busy a hotel was. Therefore, we know exactly how much mat should be collected from that hotel based on number of rooms, room rate, and occupancy. And so if a mat check is late, for example, going to CAP, Krista has great relationships with the partners, so she'll call and she'll address the concern. And then typically, the money is, you know, it comes in very shortly thereafter. So I think it's a very intimate relationship we have with our hotel partners. And it's very easy to understand when the mat's coming in and how much the mat should be collected per month. Does that help?
Yeah, sorry, I think you might have misunderstood my question. Your answer. Oh, it was more about how you're getting that information. Is it voluntarily coming from the hotels? Or do you have a third-party agency that is basically following them and scrubbing them online and collecting that data and submitting it? And then you go and say, hey, we know you did this, you owe us this. Is that occurring with hotels and motels? Or would it just be the STR hosts where we'd be using this third-party group to basically enforce their payments?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So to build on to what Megan was saying, there are lots of processes in place. So the Harmari platform that you saw did do a self-remittance of mat, and so that is to reflect what the hotels do. They self-remit their mat. However, there are tools in place to circle back for audit if we need to. We, hotels remit their information through, I know it's confusing because we're saying STRs all the time as in short-term renters, but rentals, but there is a FTR platform called Star Reporting, and so hotels report their occupancy through that. We also work with a group called AirDNA, and they collect constantly the occupancy of all of the properties in Kingston on any given day to reflect actually to our competing cities in other municipalities. So hotels are used to, and motels and the inns and other bed and breakfasts are used to that sort of reporting so that at any given time, we could randomly audit them for their self-remittance, which would be similar to the Harmari platform. They'd be self-remitting, and then there's a tool to audit if needed.
So. So it's two questions just to clarify. So at this point, I'll move to Counselor Neil.
Thank you very much. Quick question, and I think I know the answer to this, and it isn't meant to be a rhetorical question. But do all bed and breakfasts and all the accommodation suppliers accept our short-term rentals now? Have business licenses? And are they all part of the remittance schedule for for the tax that they're collecting on our behalf, on your behalf?
The answer is yes.
Yes, it was rhetorical. Sorry. I appreciate your delegation. Thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Counselor Schell.
Thank you, Worship. I just want to flag what I think was a bit of misinformation. I understand that the public domain would be for the hotels and that, but we're talking about private residence. And I think the relationship is between Airbnb and what have you. My question is, if it's really just about the mat tax, why are we looking to penalize law-abiding citizens in Kingston? And why not just try the approach of of, you know, put a little honey on it and get people engaged and work it through? These people are, in general, very, very responsive to supporting the tourism community in Kingston.
Was that a comment or a question?
Is it just, is it more than just the money? Or is it just the money for the CAP that you want to ensure we have the promotion of Kingston? Because I haven't met an STR host that doesn't want to pay the mat tax, but proposed to is the spy.
So Counselor Schell, can I just? So can you just rephrase your question one more time?
Sure. What is the primary driver for CAP in Tourism Kingston? Is it money or is it understanding where the competition is?
Yeah, I'll speak to that. Megan, you might want to contribute, but I, as mentioned in my remarks, it goes beyond the mat tax for us, certainly. I think it's about a level playing field. I think it's about fairness in the marketplace. And, you know, as indicated earlier, I think, you know, as a citizen, it's also about housing. There's multi-layers here to not being able to identify those properties that aren't coming forward. We've certainly seen a very active group coming forward, and they're fantastic. But the data is showing that there are over five hundred short-term rentals out there. And, you know, we haven't seen five hundred come forward. So I think there are lots, and they could be commercial properties. We don't know. And I think the big concern for me, and it might be a question geared towards staff, but the big concern for me would be who are those that we don't know? Who are those that we don't know?
Just as a supplemental, you mentioned there's over five hundred short term rentals. How do you know that? Like, are you using some sort of spyware as well, this Airbnb or Air DNA or what is it?
So so the question is, how how do we know how many?
Yeah, so um, in the beginning, when CAP was asked to collect um, the the mat in this um bylaw, we were being worked with around that and what that would look like. We received presentations from post compliance as well as Harmari on what. Their platforms could do for us and and what that would work. And they, I mean, we didn't see any of the information, but their presentations. Um, represented that there were over five hundred in the market marketplace currently.
Uh, thank you. Are there any other questions? Deputy Mayor Ostraw.
Thank you again, Mayor Patterson. Just a question for clarity again on the on the board of directors, if that's right. Um. You said there, I understand there's three council members with the mayor and our CEO, then there, you said there was five. And then there's five at large. Is there um, the inclusion of your board of directors, is there a certain um? Number from the the hotel industry and is there, is there certain number representing um the accommodation market in Kingston?
No, there's no specific sector related um initiatives per seat. It's it's members at large that come forward. And make a compelling case as to why they would be supportive as a board member at Tourism Kingston.
Okay, well, that's very helpful. I think that that's something that uh can be looked at. And I think that there, I understand there will be eager. Uh eagerly be participating in that. And this is evolving and changing times. So the other question I have on is on clarity, because I don't, I just want things to be. There's a lot of confusion here. Um, and so it is important to have the message out. Someone mentioned that Airbnb. Uh, also has third through third party um um. Investigation or whatever, but I understand that that's not true. Um, and that, so I just want to uh, maybe we'll get clarity later for counselors, but I understand uh. But that's.
Is that a, is that a question for the delegation?
Can you verify that with uh data or um substantiate that? Because I think that's important to understand that the money is collected. Uh, and paid by Airbnb. Not a third party.
Yeah, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your question. I would have to defer that to Mr. Campo because I was drawing from his remarks um on Thursday's meeting.
But I think it's not quite accurate, but okay, thank you.
So yeah, well, what we'll do is when, when it hits the floor, then we can ask questions of staff and so.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions? Counselor.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Ms. McLaren, Ms. Not for appearing today. Uh, I want to uh, ask you something that was brought up by another delegation, but is very relevant. It has come up in committee as well. Is, do you agree with the statement that um? The that it is very important for the city to distinguish through regulation between the commercial uh. Operations using Airbnb and and home sharing. And the ones that are renting out their own homes, like the uh, the ones. In which Airbnb was originally intended for. Do you, do you agree with the suggestion? That the city ought to, through regulation, draw a line between those two groups?
I would certainly recommend that practice.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, with that, we'll move to our our next delegation. Now we've. Uh, at this point, uh, I'm going to ask for motions from council to approve the additional delegations. Uh, so uh, first moved by councillor Hill, seconded by councillor Neil. Uh, that we waive the procedural bylaw in order to allow Ron Heartling. Uh, to speak to report number twelve from the administrative policies committee. We'll do the votes right now and then I can circle back uh on those. So first of all, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Uh, next move by councillor Hill, seconded by councillor Neil, that our procedural bylaw again be uh. Be waived in order to allow Adrian Montgomery also to speak to clause one B of report number twelve from the Minister for the Policies Committee. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. And then finally, again, moved by councillor Hill, seconded by councillor Neil. That our procedural bylaw be waived in order to allow Kurt Khan to speak to clause one B of report number twelve from the Administrative Policies Committee. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, so with that, uh, we have three additional delegations, so we will circle back. First, I'll invite uh Mr. Heartling. Uh, to address council. And again, just a reminder to our uh remaining delegations that you have five minutes.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, great. Um, thank you, councillors. I'm delighted to speak for rather than against the recommendation. This issue has been fraught and fatigue is setting in. I suggest we owe a big vote of thanks to your colleagues on Administrative Policy Committee for having forged. Compromise for which we can, with which we can live. It retains licensing for STR hopes hosts fulfilling the direction given by staff to your predecessors. But respect replaces expensive ethically objectionable third party surveillance with a simpler, more cost effective solution. I say that based on the cost benefit comparison summarized in this first slide. Projected uh mat revenues are likely to be less than you had envisioned. With reflecting the near disappearance of tourism traffic that's unlikely to recover until twenty, at least twenty twenty two, since. Some sixty percent of people must be vaccinated before life can begin returning to normal. Next slide, please. While too small to read, this slide gives you a sense of how many factors we've considered. Rigorous analysis plus credible options is precisely what US councillors deserve for informed decision making. Our monthly mat projections estimate both total STR billings and the percentage of compliant hosts. Option A is based on the roughly eighty five percent of STR hosts using the Airbnb platform being a hundred percent compliant on day one. Since the tax will be automatically paid by guests on booking. The remaining fifteen percent would gradually start paying after getting their licenses. Staff's option B is considerably slower since all STR hosts would have to comply individually. That said, our compliance estimates are way more optimistic than the picture painted in Harmari marketing literature. Next slide. As you can see, they assume that to achieve seventy percent or more compliance, municipalities should purchase their most expensive and deeply intrusive package. We have a lot more faith than that in Kingston, Kingstonians inherent civic mindedness and assume seventy percent. Percent compliance within four months, even from non Airbnb hosts. Next slide. There are two misconceptions in the concern that hosts, um, could you go back one? No, uh, sorry, no, go ahead. I I missbit. Uh, there are two misconceptions in the concern that hosts would leave Airbnb to evade the mat. First, hosts don't pay the mat, guests do at the time of booking, so there's nothing to evade. Our business model is based on never collecting money from guests, which is done on our behalf by Airbnb, thus saving us the accounting overhead. Second, leaving Airbnb would mean forfeiting one hundred percent reimbursement for tenant damage. Insurance that's not available in Ontario at any price. Most hosts can't afford the risk. I predict that the percent of STR hosts utilizing the Airbnb platform will rise, not fall with a mat collection agreement with the city. Some worry about party houses and other neighborhood nuisances from STRs. That may be a valid concern with student housing, but there's no evidence of significant problems to date with Kingston Airbnbs. Every guest day generates a review and hosts succeed or or fail based on their recent reviews. That's why Airbnb has raised, not lower, the quality of housing stock, rarely generating valid complaints. The other concern is affordable housing for which there has been no Kingston evidence of Airbnbs having worsened. Kingston has close to seventy thousand housing units, but only five hundred and five hundred Airbnb hosts. As most hosts can't afford the risk associated with long term rental, the number who could be coerced into that market is minimal. Your choice tonight boils down to whether you prefer an adversarial coercive approach to compliance. Generating a lot less mat revenue while disrupting the business models of many of your constituents, or a much simpler agreed approach. For those who may wish additional restrictive measures, is there really an appetite for? Among counselors to reopen this ball of wax now after a long difficult year? The recommendation includes a review after one year. Therefore, makes far more sense to start with a simple solution and then assess whether or not it suffices based on objective facts rather than speculation. Why not use the first year to collect more data and then sit down collegially and non adversarially? To identify legitimate concerns and brainstorm acceptable solutions. Now is not the time to make host life more more difficult. The only reference to the pandemic in the staff record is a paragraph implying that hosts have rare. Having been relatively unscathed. So legit, so are legitimate targets for the proposed measures. Even the most cursory fact checking would show that to be grossly untrue. In reality, almost all hosts have suffered dramatic income loss. Regular tourist visitors have disappeared. Combined with social distancing restrictions, that has put most hosts who rent rooms in their principal residence out of business for their duration. Those with self contained suites are now mostly serving smaller markets of people needing temporary stay. Many are at risk of losing their homes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, are there any questions in council?
We heard in a presentation from, I'm sorry, worship. Uh, we heard in a presentation from Kingston Accommodation Partners that the city is always. An Airbnb host. Uh, that was new information for me this evening. How does that make you feel as an Airbnb host here in Kingston?
Well, it makes me uncomfortably uncomfortable. Frankly, I wouldn't do it. I would switch to medium term housing because I have uh, we rent a suite. And that's, that's accessible to that. Um, I I simply wouldn't tolerate that. The comment that um. Air B, you know, that Airbnb is an American company with our in, uh, with our information. Um, evades the fundamental principle of privacy that. That information has been given with informed consent. Uh, what, what Harmari would have to collect. Uh, undoubtedly involves violating their uh term, you know. Terms of access to the Airbnb website. So uh, so I think I consider it unethical.
Just. Yeah, that's just.
Just as a supplemental, uh, Mr. Harding, would you be putting your name forward to sit on the cap uh board uh as a representative?
Possibly. I would, I would certainly um look to our group to uh, to see if there were volunteers. I don't want to be. Yeah, permanently the figurehead of the group.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. It was very professional.
Thank you. Uh, next is councillor Hill.
Just a a question about what you said regarding uh, no longer be like. I just want to make sure I'm not misunderstanding this, but did you say something to you that? Uh, if the, if there was a third party that was looking after this collection of tax and identifying the uh. The roster of uh Airbnb home or um short term rental homes, that you could no longer be a part of Airbnb because I'm not.
Uh, no, I I I didn't, I, that's, that's not what what I implied. Um, you know. I have ethnic ethical objections, serious ethical objections to my community becoming part of the surveillance society. Um, and to show that, I would leave. Short term rentals, rentals thirty days and and under. And focus on longer term rentals, which I can still do through Airbnb, but which would not come under the bylaw. And the city would, a lot of, I I should add that. I've done a, I've done a survey of uh, of an informal survey of hosts and a lot of them would would uh do the same, which means. The amount of money available for net mat collection would go down. Essentially, anyone with a suite can uh, can go into the medium term market.
Okay, next is councillor Dory.
Thank you and through you, uh, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Harding. Uh, I actually had the same question because I did actually hear that too, that you would stop if we were to use the Harmari. Um, system that you would stop using Airbnb. So thanks for explaining that. Could you, you also said that um, this would um disrupt the business model for hosts. Can you explain how? The, you would disrupt a business model?
Sure. The um, one of uh hosts, you know, the majority of hosts are very small home based businesses. Um, we don't have, um, most of those businesses can't afford, you know, lawyers and accountants and bookkeepers. Um, the um, Airbnb is the perfect business model for us because. We don't have to collect money and we never do collect money from guests. All of that's done for us by Airbnb, the taxes are paid, they remit to us, you know, our share. And it's, it's very simple and it's uh, it's a huge time saver. Um, so it's a very good model for small, for uh very small businesses. And the overheads of collecting and justifying um suit that. And I should, I should point out. That it's, it's more than just the, the uh bookkeeping of of remittances. According to the, what uh, what's the decommissioner and the Harmari CEO? Said at the, at the previous uh APC meeting. Um, we would really be expected to justify every day. That we would have to keep documentation to prove that every day that our calendars were not open for booking. Why? What we we do about it? And we, you know, as as individuals, we, we host family, we host friends, we host charity cases. At 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 no cost. We take time off, we do maintenance. It's really an intrusion into our personal lives to, to open it up for an outside firm like. Uh, like Harmari to ask for us to justify. So that's why it's so unpalatable.
Thank you very much.
Mm hmm. Next is councillor.
Thank you worship and through you. Thanks for a professional presentation there, Mr. Harding. My first question is is basically that with, without having a seat at the table as these regulations uh were basically proposed and. This process unfolded. Uh, sometimes we do really well with processes, sometimes it apparently leaves something be desired. You say. That you almost feel like you're being regulated by your competitors in a sense without actually having a voice at the table. Um, to kind of sort of process out as this sort of process unfolded. Would that be a fair?
I I think what we've been able to uh determine in our study of council documents going back to the beginning of this process. It was really driven at the beginning by uh, by the hotel, by the hotel lobby and, you know, by by the uh. Uh, and um. We really had to fight to, to um, to be involved, you know, to have a say. But throughout, with one exception, um, for about a half an hour once last summer. Um, it was all, we speak, they listen, they go away. And make their decisions. And we find out six days before the, the next council or APC meeting what, what that decision is. Um, that's totally foreign to the models I've seen elsewhere professionally, particularly in the, in the federal government where. The primary stakeholders are at the table throughout the process and can do fact checking. They can ask for evidence and and review the evidence for the statements being made by staff. And uh, what's unfortunate for all of you is that this process has meant that. Since we didn't get that opportunity, our only recourse was through you. Which ways, you know, which is a disrespectful, disrespectful of your very valuable time. In the federal government, you know. Deputy ministers, assistant deputy ministers, management committees would never tolerate that. They would want to see that full consultation with stakeholders has happened. Throughout the process.
Okay, thank you. My second uh question would basically be, we know this has been an arduous process. Uh, it's been going on for years now and. You were basically at admin policies when we brought forward a proposal to try to walk this forward a little bit. So. Based on the compromise that was uh passed by with five votes there unanimously for everybody who could vote on admin policies. Would you say that it's a fair compromise, but really no side got everything they wanted? Is is that a fair statement? So. The amended motion before us tonight that we're going to vote on is basically a compromise position.
Yes, I, yeah, and I, I said, and you know, I gave credit for it being a compromise position and I, and I, and I meant it. We were pushing for a simpler, even less expensive alternative of our registration process rather than. We were pushing for a simpler, even less expensive alternative of our registration process rather than a full licensing process. Everything else in the staff proposal is the same except for the mat collection through Hamari. So I think it is, but we also recognize that this process has gone on long enough and we're quite willing to accept that process and go forward with it. And hopefully in the future through licensing, have a much more collegial, non-adversarial relationship with staff so that we don't have to bother you again.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council? Counselor Stone.
Yeah, I want to thank you. Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and thank you, Mr. Hartling, for, for a really great presentation. Because I think kind of what you've done is help us boil down and where, where we see we need to go tonight. And I want to make clear, so your presentation tonight made it clear then that from an economic point of view, it is much better in the first year, let's go with a simpler approach tonight. The amended approach gives us a clear, positive financial picture. Is that what you were saying?
Yeah, I was. That's, that's the logical way to proceed is to, if you've got a choice, do it the simpler way first and then evaluate. And when you do the evaluation, you're working for, for fact, from facts, not speculation, because you've got evidence for what you're doing.
Thank you very much, Ron.
Okay, seeing, yes, Counselor.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Mr. Hartling. Very professional presentation. I'm just going to ask you the same question I asked the previous delegation. The first delegation suggested that it is very important that the city draw a line through regulation between the hosts that are using their own home and and those that may use the rules or the lack thereof for a commercial enterprise that has multiple units. Commercial, you know, as a business. And I, and I would, so I'm asking, what, what do you think about the suggestion that we need to maybe have different regulations for one versus the other? Or somehow draw a line to regulation between those two and make that decision?
In general, I agree, but slightly more nuanced. There's, there's people who rent, there's hosts who rent rooms in their principal residence. And there's hosts who have a property, you know, an apartment, a flat, something like that. That's not directly contiguous with their principal residence. They provide some of the best accommodations for visitors in, in, you know, in the city in terms of, you know, quality for, for money. So, but there's still, you know, Kingston residents looking after their own property nearby. I'd certainly, that's very different from commercial operations where, where a property manager is managing it. And that's where things go, go off the rail. We don't have that yet in Kingston, so it's not urgent at the moment, particularly with the, with the pandemic and the, the lack of, the lack of business. But it's certainly something that we would, we would support intelligent regulation to, to discourage, you know, the big commercial operations from moving into Kingston. And we'd like to do that collegially as that year unfolds.
Thank you. So there, so you seem to agree on the, on the, on the large commercial operation. But you would, you would insist that the, some of the smaller owner operated, local Kingston resident operated, where it might be the, you know, the home or, or the, or something very similar on the same block or something like that. That would, at the risk of that getting caught by the regulation, we have to look at that very carefully to not do that. And maybe just so that it catches the large commercial operations.
Yep, I agree. There's lots of great Airbnb hosts whose, whose principal residences are not physically capable of delivering what they want to deliver.
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, thank you very much. With that, we will move to our next delegation. We'll invite Adrian Montgomery to speak to council. So Montgomery, you have the floor.
Hello, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Of course, my screen has just gone off my speaking notes. I am wanting to speak to you as a host of STRs. It's a lot to take in all of this. Mr. Hartling made excellent points, so I won't repeat them. I'll just fill in a bit. Hosts are individuals making ends meet, mostly solo entrepreneurs. We're not Airbnb. We just use their booking system. Some of the terms aren't exactly clear in their system, so I'll help with that. Entire space just means that there's no shared space. So my space is listed as entire, but it's just one room blocked off from my house and it's not suitable for a longer rental. I won't be leaving the short-term rental market, but neither would that be a possibility as a longer-term rental. Other spaces are only vacant a bit of the year because of times when we used to be able to travel. And of course, some people are renting entire spaces like their cottage and I like renting those cottages. When I started renting or hosting two and a half years ago, I called the city to make sure it was okay with the zoning and the bylaws. So I'm really looking forward to this proposal going through. The guests we see are, I see mostly students on medical rotation or who are looking for a longer rental while they're at school. They need a place to stay while they search. People going for hospital treatment or visiting people in hospital. International workers on shorts of conements. I do see some tourists, but I more see the entertainers who come to serve those tourists at things like Fringe and the Buskers Festival. Sometime I'm the guest when I rent a cottage or need a retreat for writing. Hosting guests use that Airbnb and Verbo systems for reasons you've already heard, as well as verifying identification. I don't have to do that myself. They do it. And reviews of guests. We talked earlier that hosts get reviewed so we can get wind of bad hosts, but we also review guests so we can avoid partyers and other bad actors. This bylaw, I think, is going to help us maintain and promote high standards. As a guest, it also gives me confidence to know that the city has standards. And in fact, this bylaw already helped us. We came together to explain how the bookings work to staff and police officers and counselors. We came together to support each other as hosts and explain how hands-on we are. And to give us collective resources, like when we took the sex trafficking training earlier this year, even though not a single case of sex trafficking in our wide region has been linked to an STR. We're really pleased to see that there's no arbitrary limit anymore to rental days. That would not return my units to housing stock, but it would boost prices. We support the mat tax. We've already said that. And the automation that's available via the booking systems that would guarantee a 100% accuracy of my records and what we remit from our guests. It also means that visitors can rest assured that they will not be harassed about their presence in our city or be monitored while they're here. And neither will our small businesses be presumed guilty of tax avoidance based on surveillance and conjecture. The committee and their wisdom agreed that this should not be using third parties by companies to estimate taxes. I'm glad we agree. I hope those points show how the proposed bylaw serves citizens and hosts and visitors and raising the standards for all of us in cooperation, not in conflict. I really look forward to moving this forward and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counselor.
Thank you, your worship and through you. So just very quickly to the delegation. So everything that you mentioned basically seemed like you were in support of a lot of the, like the bylaws and all these rules and everything like that. It just seemed like the one thing that you were truly against was the third-party spy company. So that being removed with the amended proposal, it kind of seems like you're almost behind the rest of it. Is that an accurate statement? As long as that spying agency is not part of this going forward?
Yes, Counselor Bollum, I agree. We are in favor of this. There's been a lot of work and a lot of compromise and other aspects of the proposal, I think, will make everything safer for everyone and increase the value. It's just the, you know, the conjecture and presumed guilty of evading taxes before we get a chance to submit them.
Fair enough. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, see none. Thank you very much. And with that, we will move to our final delegation of the evening. We will invite Kurt Kahn to speak to council again with respect to the short-term rental licensing program. On, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Patterson. Can you hear me okay? Great. Just let me launch my little program here. Well, listen, it's been a roller coaster of a night. Mayor Patterson, councilors and my fellow Kingstonians and the city staff, thank you so much for this opportunity. It's the second time I've had the opportunity to speak to you all and I'm always struck by how this forum imparts a sense of connection to the city. Our city, this is Kingston, not Toronto or Ottawa or anywhere else. And it has a recognition that the voice of the residents here matter and that we are respected and partners in issues that are important to the city. In that spirit, I'd like to thank the staff and the counselors for all their hard work and the time and dedication to what is, and although it may not feel that way, a really very new issue of the STR in our city and revealing itself to be such an important part of the fabric of our city in so many ways. As we've all stated many times, the home share hosting Kingston are fully committed and happy to contribute to the betterment of our city in any way that we can. We've already been doing this since it started by, since we all started on this journey by providing an exceptional experience to our guests that we welcome to our homes. We encourage them to explore all the little nooks and crannies. We let them in on the local flavor and recommending the fantastic sites and shops and restaurants that we have here. We're fully, I have, I live downtown and I'm fully connected to all the businesses in the downtown area. And they know me and they know and my guests are recommended to them. And now with the implementation of the MAT, we are, we are happy to contribute yet again to the city. It should be noted that Kingston again is not Ottawa, Toronto or Montreal. And I resent that it is being compared in that regard and even to Amsterdam that we've heard from somebody that doesn't live here. Our challenges are unique and should be absolutely not lumped into the large cities and the issues that they face. This is the size and scale of Kingston. It's small, it's human, it's neighborly and it's part of the charm and allure and why it is so beautiful to see people come here. And it also might be useful to have an exercise to see how places around Ontario of our size have handled the newness of adding the STR to their cities in the matter of collection, collecting the MAT. So in our research, and there's a lot of us, there's a lot of committed STR hosts. In our research, Brockville, Cornwall, Mississauga, Ottawa, Sudbury, Toronto, Waterloo, Windsor, all have a voluntary agreement with Airbnb to collect the MAT. All of them, of all of them, the city of Waterloo kind of emerged as a comparable example. They may not have been the first to collect the MAT, but they were definitely the first to start collecting it from Airbnb. So I thought I'd spend an afternoon to make some calls to get in touch with them and see how things were going. And what I found out really impressed initially and then saddened me, I'll explain why later. Firstly, I was struck by the attitude they hold. They do not view the Airbnb host community or the STR industry as adversaries. Imagine that. Everyone that I spoke to from the tax department to the tourism department was extremely positive about the inclusion. It had nothing but good things to say, not only about how the STR hosts add to their city, but specifically how the good, how good the relationship with the Airbnb, with Airbnb is. And come on, I don't want to come across as some like Waterloo Pollyanna. I know that the good feelings are partially about the revenue that the hosts will generate and that they're happy about that. But in fact, but that in and of itself is a market difference from what we've been feeling here as hosts. Waterloo, Waterloo views the STR host community as contributors to the city and the revenues they generate and are submitted by Airbnb as a windfall that they hadn't enjoyed before. In fact, I had a good chat with a senior official about it and never once in our, in our conversation was the idea of policing the STR hosts enforce the collection ever mentioned. They saw Airbnb as a partner and a help. Having Airbnb do the collection and submission of the MAT was viewed as a great perk of the relationship. That was easy and effective and free. On more than one occasion, the idea was of collaboration and working together was expressed. And it was, that's what saddened me. We don't have that here. The example of Waterloo is what is possible when stakeholders are working together. And we are absolutely stakeholders in this and we've not really been given the opportunity to work together until very recently by the APC. There was no protracted bylaw process there in Waterloo, no ill will generated by one-sided, heavy-handed approach, but a respect and appreciation for how hardworking the STR community is and how much it contributes to the, to the city. And I know this has been a long road and we're all very happy and relieved that we have made it to this point in the conversation. And some of the presentations today were very disturbing. The challenge, the changes that have been made to the original bylaw framed after cities that look nothing like Kingston are greatly followed by Kingston home share hosts. And we've been relieved to be able to continue earning our living and contributing to Kingston in our way. Most recently, the thoughtful and heroic work of the counselors of the APC and specifically Counselor Chappelle and Mom and Usterhoff was incredible. In addition, Counselor Stroud provided excellent guidance as a chair and together they were inspiring in their will to find a solution that was effective and met the needs of all involved. The solution is the new amended recommendation for the bylaw as presented by Counselor Bollum and approved at the last meeting of the APC. And that is what we're talking about tonight. The home share.
Thank you.
That it brings us much respectful, common sense approach to this and I respectfully ask that you all vote in favor of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Okay, yes, Counselor Chappelle.
Thank you, your worship. Unfortunately, it seemed like you ran out of time, but you were going to comment on what you had learned from Waterloo. And I was hoping you could just elaborate a little bit on that comment and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Counselor Chappelle. Yeah, what I learned was, it was shocking really. It was this sense of cohesiveness and collaboration and a recognition that the, the short-term hosts add to the city. There wasn't any adversarial talk at all. Everybody was very happy that I spoke to, that engaged with Airbnb. They said they were a great partner. They were easy and smooth to work with. There was never any hiccups or worried about having to submit the MAT on time. It was all delivered as a check and, and the money was gratefully received. There wasn't ever any, and I spoke to many people in, in the department, in the city. I called anybody who would talk to me really. It was just an exercise that I spent an afternoon doing. And it was without exception, a positive experience. I hope that answers your question.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thing that we can provide here, I think, and I don't see why not.
Counselor Bollum, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship and through you. Thank you for that presentation. Would, would you say then, I mean, if, if we were to take the common sense approach and approve the, the amendment as it came out of administrative policies tonight? And based on your Waterloo experience there and talking with them, it seems like it could work. But would you say it's fair that if we took this approach and it didn't work, then we could go back after the fact and maybe consider some of these other things, but going that way first would kind of like defy common sense, really?
Yeah, that's, that's been an obvious thing to me since this thing all kind of surfaced is that we should do things that are easy and free and collaborative and assess not based on speculation or what could be or what has been projected in other cities, but what is actually the reality of things in Kingston based on the experience that we're going to have? And have a, like a, a starting point or, you know, a barometer to get to judge things from going forward. So absolutely, we should be doing this in a way that is not going to treat us as, as criminals and thugs, but as collaborative, contributing members of the city that are, that want to do things in the right way and want to be part of this community and add to it.
Thank you so much for that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Kahn. At this point, then we are through our delegations and so now we will move to briefings. We have two briefings on deck at this, at this point. First, Craig Dejordin, Director of Office of Innovation Strategy and Partnerships. And Donna Gillespie, CEO of KECO, will provide introductory remarks and introduce Laura Blennis, President and CEO of Stiletto, Make A Point. He'll brief council on clause one, report number eight received from the CAO with respect to the recommended integrated economic development strategy. Mr. Dejordin, Ms. Gillespie, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. I'm here tonight with Donna Gillespie, CEO of Kingston Economic Development and Laura Blennis, President of Stiletto Consulting in relation to report 2112 that seeks your endorsement of the new Kingston Integrated Economic Development Strategy and staff direction to begin implementation of this plan. During the unprecedented social and economic disruptions brought on by the global pandemic, city and economic development staff, along with community partners and our consultants, have led a data-driven strategic process that has created an integrated results-focused framework for community and economic prosperity. The plan developed and recommendations validated have been engaged through stakeholders. The plan developed and recommendations validated have been engaged through stakeholder and public consultation. Council will be familiar with many of the major themes and recommendations in the plan. There is strong alignment integration between the economic development strategy and council's strategic priorities. With your endorsement tonight, work will begin immediately on the execution of the plan. And while some recommendations will take time, we anticipate that others will see early results. I'll now pass the podium over to Donna.
Thank you, Craig. Good evening, Mayor Patterson and members of council. I am so pleased to be here this evening to deliver the first ever integrated economic development strategy for Kingston. The moment of this plan, as Craig has mentioned, has been a collaborative effort among our teams, the Economic Development Board of Directors and many community stakeholders. It's an exciting, bold vision, yet thoughtful, authentic and speaks to Kingston's unique strengths and opportunities before us, especially in the focused development of clusters in sustainable manufacturing and health innovation. The plan builds on our solid economic foundation, recent investment wins and allows us to seize new opportunities as we emerge out of COVID-19. We will continue to stake our claim on the provincial, national and international stage as a great and awesome place to live, work and invest. We engaged Stiletto Consulting early in the new year to assist with the data gathering, analysis, stakeholder interviews and development of strategies to drive a vision aligned with council priorities. I would now like to hand over to Laura O'Blennis to walk you through the recommendations.
Thank you, Donna, and good evening, Mayor Patterson, councillors and city staff. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, 10 days before Christmas. You're welcome. This is your early Christmas present and integrated strategy that's going to help provide direction for economic growth and building cohesion in our, in our tremendous community. So thank you so much for sharing the screen. We're going to run you through a deck that's going to highlight some of the recommendations in the report and certainly have the opportunity for questions at the end. So next slide. So we began the process, as Donna had indicated earlier this year, this is just a snapshot of the process that we've gone through in terms of going through the collection and review of about 179 reports, 6,400 data points, 53 meetings with about 223 participants, detailed analysis, forecasting, developing the concept and the framework. We did use the Engage Kingston platform and received 375 survey responses. This information is included in the appendices of the report that you were provided in advance of this discussion, which we're happy to discuss later. And then of course, looking at execution and how we can move this along through to implementation. Next slide. There's four things that we really want to highlight and, and what helped to formulate some of the recommendations that you'll see this evening in the report. The Kingston value proposition, there's really four areas where Kingston really thrives in comparison to their competing jurisdictions. There's 14 and a half million people in the Toronto, Ottawa, Montreal corridor. There's no other Canadian census metropolis area that has such a large population base to draw from. It's an extraordinary benefit that Kingston has that we want to build on. We have a very large domestic tourism market. I know we heard from Megan from Tourism Kingston doing tremendous things in our community. And there's no other CMA that's attracting more Canadian tourists than Kingston now more than ever with COVID and fewer people flying. The opportunity for tire traffic, as we call it, is even greater than before. There's an ability to attract post-secondary education students in high volume. In 2018, Kingston attracted 5,500 international students, which is the second largest amount among all CMAs in Ontario, adjusted, of course, for population size and one of the highest concentrations of PhDs in Canada, meaning we have a very highly educated workforce, which we want to leverage. Only the city of Waterloo has such a larger share in earned doctorate than Kingston. Next slide. There's four things we want to highlight. We know it's a lot to review in terms of the report, but there's four things that we hope that you'll take away from this exercise. The strategy is directed by two specific actions, one, which is a fully integrated and collaborative community. The second, a clustered approach for driving short and long-term economic growth potential, which Donna highlighted. The two primary clusters that we're proposing are health and health innovation and sustainable manufacturing, which we'll talk about in a moment. Two additional strategic frameworks that are referenced and considered include rural Kingston Economic Development Strategy and the Creative Industries Strategic Framework, which we'll see more on early in the new year, but we'll speak to them from a high level this evening. And the implementation of a framework for execution that includes collaboration among many community stakeholders, including the city of Kingston and Kingston Economic Development. Next slide. So there's four pillars, 13 themes and 35 recommended initiatives. In the interest of time this evening, we will focus on the pillars and themes and certainly allow for further conversation on the initiatives if time permits in the question period. Next slide. So in terms of the framework, there's four pillars, as I mentioned, beginning with the foundational component of focusing and positioning the community, then collaborating and communicating with a series of themes in, in each of these areas, followed by leveraging our assets and infrastructure that currently exist in Kingston and that we believe can be built out in a fairly strategic and comprehensive way. And then moving along, of course, to execution and implementation, which will be key in working collectively and cohesively as a community. Next slide. So the four pillars that I've just highlighted include, and this is where we'll focus in the next couple of minutes, is 13 themes. In the focus and positioning, we have three themes. In collaboration and communication, there are three themes. In assets and infrastructure, three. And in the implementation, there are four themes. Let's go to the next slide. Just from a very high level, this is a little bit of a snapshot of the recommended initiatives, which we're not going to go into in detail because we do not have sufficient time, but I will highlight them very quickly. Adopting a concept framework, which actually allows us to look at both short-term and long-term economic opportunities. And I am going to show you the framework in a moment. The two strategic clusters, which we identified in health innovation and sustainable manufacturing, and there's buckets under those. Leveraging market access is really about propping up our creative industries sector and leveraging that tire traffic that I talked about in terms of your tourism strength. And a work, a remote workers campaign, which is becoming more and more prevalent and popular globally right now with COVID, certainly an opportunity with Kingston because of your market access with that 14 and a half million people. In partnerships and collaboration, marketing communications and measuring success, this is all about marketing communications. It's about building cohesion in the community and aligning your messaging and branding among the key stakeholders within the community. It's also about building collaboration with your post-secondary institution partners and neighboring communities. And, and in this, we see opportunities around the assets and infrastructure and what we can look at for collaboration with these neighboring communities and post-secondary institutions. Let's go to the next slide. The, the, under the assets and infrastructure, the next three pillars, leveraging community and business infrastructure, the potential in rural Kingston and the support for creative industries. Again, not sufficient time to go through all of these, but really what this is all about is leveraging your existing assets, looking at broadband connectivity. We're proposing looking at labs to support growth in health and manufacturing and a technology park, which we believe are critical infrastructure assets to be able to build out the strategic clusters that we've highlighted. Let's go to the next slide in terms of the execution. I want to focus on a few things. Diversity and inclusion, building out your workforce capacity. These are already things that the city is, is excelling at and, and undertaking some strategic initiatives that we want to enhance. And then looking at your project selection and approval process in, in helping to mobilize the execution team to look at this. Let's go to the next slide because it actually shows the concept framework and how these pieces all fit together. So when we look at the concept framework, the bottom, you see the timelines and the outcomes. And we've tried to build this in a way that shows some immediate opportunities, which is really your foundation building, your medium term, which is leveraging your infrastructure and then longer term, seeing the impact potential for your clusters of innovation. So on the bookend, you see your inputs and the key areas that we want to focus in and leverage. On the right-hand side, you see the outputs in terms of what we want to drive and create, which of course is new companies, new jobs, GDP growth and long-term clusters of innovation. And in the middle are all the activities in terms of leveraging your value prop, building out the strategic clusters and leveraging your existing community assets so that we can look at both short-term and longer-term economic opportunities. Let's move to the next slide. There's three buckets under each of the clusters. Sustainable manufacturing is really about material and process innovation, advanced manufacturing and low-impact food processing. There's additional information about how these clusters were selected in the body of the report that you will see. And health and health innovation is around health data, healthy aging and veterans' health. And as Craig mentioned in his introductory remarks, these are nicely aligned with existing activities and funding requests that are in play and in progress. Let's move to the next slide. So how does this all work in terms of moving forward? And this is where the rubber really hits the road. This framework is something we really want to focus on in terms of how we then mobilize all of this. Cause it seems like a lot, but when you break it down into this illustration, it becomes very comprehensive. At the center, you see the focal points of health and health innovation, sustainable manufacturing, rural and creative. The enablers being around people and talent, which is really your workforce development. It's about building partnerships and leveraging those existing community and post-secondary institutional partnerships, leveraging your infrastructure, your funding and, and, and building more collaborative marketing campaigns that are aligned. Governance comes from working groups, which we recommend that there be working groups to assist in mobilizing the health and health innovation, sustainable manufacturing and creative industries in particular. And jointly with Kingston Economic Development and, and the city of Kingston. And then of course, execution, city of Kingston, Queen's and St. Lawrence College, which we believe are incredibly important to the execution of the strategy, Kingston Economic Development and of course, our business and community partners. Next slide. Timelines for implementation, there's a series of timelines that we've identified over the next six months. And I'll show you a table in a moment that shows sort of the timelines of when you may see results in some of these activities. But first and foremost, it's about getting ready for execution and implementation. There's a series of components that will need to take place over the next six months from finalizing additional resources to identifying programming and business support requirements. This will be done in collaboration between the city of Kingston and Kingston Economic Development, bringing together the necessary stakeholders and partners through this continuum to ensure that the appropriate resources are in place for each of the recommendations, which is how we believe that this can be mobilized and achieved. Next slide. In terms of measuring success, as I mentioned previously, it's about jobs, GDP, it's about offering business expansion potential, attracting investment. Of course, expanding opportunities for your research and development and innovation. You've got Queen's University in our beautiful city who are doing extraordinary things in research. Let's augment that and support the, the great work of other post-secondary institutions like St. Lawrence College, supporting newcomers and immigrant entrepreneurs, strengthening community engagement and building infrastructure and asset or leveraging your existing infrastructure. Next slide. We've put this a table here to be able to highlight that while these initiatives are being built out, strategic clusters take about 10 years to actually mobilize and see significant impact. And so we're seeing here that you'll start to see the benefit of some of these activities over the next couple of years. Some of these other recommendations will take, will, you'll see results immediately and others over a period of time, just to manage expectations for the community and the partners and the stakeholders, that this is an effort that, that is intended to be a long-term strategy for the community, where you can also see short-term results and impact as well. Next slide. With that, we'll open it up for discussion. Mayor will throw it back over to you for any comments, commentary or points of clarification that the team would like to have.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councillor.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering about the measures of success. Particularly in the report, there's appendix A, which gives some detail on what those KPIs will be, but they don't seem to exactly match the other document where it says measuring success. So I'm wondering if you could speak to that, if they are the same and if they're supposed to be the same. There's a particular one that I'm interested in, which is the actual salary of the jobs that are created to make sure that we're attracting and encouraging good paying jobs. It's in the appendix, appendix A, but it's not in the measuring success part of the document. So maybe you could clarify that for me.
Mr. Dejordan.
Thank you, your worship. Through you to the councillor. So certainly the, the development of the, the strategy is a little bit the higher level. The, I think the appendix you're referring to is actually SLA between the city and Kingston Economic Development. So the, the, I think the depth of, of that, of that strategic or that SLA is a little bit, a little bit more clear and more detailed. It was developed after the strategic economic development strategy was created. So certainly with regard to, I think, if you want to clarify which, which measure you, you wanted to, 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 I guess, get a more clarity on.
Yeah, it was about the, the pay, the salary of the jobs, because the appendix had both the salary of new jobs and also the growth in those salaries over time. So I'm glad that's in the SLA, which will be more of the direct thing that we can be measuring. So thanks for clarifying that.
Great. So thank you, your worship, just to clarify regarding jobs. Certainly number of jobs is, is important. But as you're correct, the actual salary is, is even more important. Good, higher paying jobs, living wage jobs are a critical component to make sure that everybody succeeds in our economy. I think one of the challenges though is, is how data is collected. A lot of job data, wage data is averaged. So we'll, we're, we're going to be working with the stats to make sure that we can pull that out, pull it out and look at it on a sector by sector basis. Obviously there are wage rates within sectors that we can sort of drill down into.
Perfect. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Sorry, I didn't hear you. Yeah, thanks again. This is, I think it's an exciting day to actually have this, if I can say that. Certainly from an economic development point of view, I really appreciate Mr. Dejordan and Ms. Gillespie's part of that. And Laura, you've hung in there with us. We might've stumbled out of the gate a bit, but this is an example that, you know, it wasn't always easy. Okay. And so I think that that's a bit of life there because what happened is we got stronger when we, when we, we actually had some challenges and it got better. I really feel a lot of energy here with this and I really, as a rural councillor, I'm delighted to see the, the inclusion of the economic strategy. And maybe Laura, you can, there, what, did you, did we get it highlighted in there as to what that rural development is? Is it embedded in there that people can access?
Yeah. So, so the, from my understanding and Mr. Dejordan can add to this, Craig, I know you're on deck as well for, for this. The, the rural, the full rural economic development strategy, I believe, is coming to council in January. I don't believe the date has been finalized. Once that is made available in public, then it will, the link will be provided in the integrated economic development strategy. At this time, we certainly highlighted that in the report in that the, the, the two strategies, the creative and the rural were developed in tandem. And then the details pertaining to the, the four themes under rural are included in the economic development strategy, which we didn't have sufficient time to really get into, but include things like looking at Hamlet-led development and tourism potential opportunities. Some really exciting things there for rural, certainly that we're looking forward to discussing further when it comes to council for the full report, but that is included in the economic strategy.
Okay. And Mayor Patterson, one more question. And related to councillor Kylie, I mentioned about measuring success. I was concerned about, I'm not sure where it fits, but perhaps in Mr. Dejordan's part and Ms. Gillespie's, but about messaging. And, you know, because now we have, when we own this, we will, we will, we will develop that message, right? And I was wondering how that's going to happen, like even with the city departments and that, like in planning and in recognition of, of things that are coming that are, that are aligned with our strategic plan. Is that something that, that will happen as well within the city and all the departments? And, and that it'll, it will be, there will be an education process to it. And then it's internal, but also external that will get a message to the community, to, to Ontario, to Canada and the world that this is, this is something that's going to be shown, right?
Your worship, through you to councillor, the integration that took place in the development of, of the strategy was not just with organizations across the community. It was also within the city. So I think your point is well taken. As in, in the development of the strategy, we did engage with planning, with real estate, with a variety of staff, with cultural services. So they're aware of the, of the strategy, but there will be a communication component internal to the city to ensure that they're, they're actively involved in implementing and messaging out the activities of the strategy.
Thank you very much. Those are so important. Thank you.
Donna, did you want to add to that for the other community stakeholders? Did you want me to add that as well?
I completely agree with Craig through you, Mayor Patterson. We work very closely with city communications, departments and business agencies. So spreading the message internally is part of the recommendations and really taking a very aggressive Kingston can approach. and really taking a very aggressive Kingston Can approach to talking about how as a community and a business community, we can succeed. We're currently looking at communications campaign. We're building off of the Love Kingston and looking at how we start to implement the recommendations. And then working with our regional and provincial partners and Invest Canada to look at how we spread the message provincially and nationally about how Kingston is going to stake its claim in these two sector clusters.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm looking for other hands. My councillor.
Thank you, your worship. In preparation for tonight's meeting, I went back to the 2015, 2020 strategic plan that was put out by Tedco. And splashed on the bottom of every page in the footer was 5,000 jobs, $500 million in investment. And I realized we have this new integrated plan that's in partnership with the city. So my question is two-fold. One, who owns the plan? Is it city-owned or is it Tedco-owned? And two, are we going to receive a report from Tedco with respect to how we did on the $5,000, $500 million investment at the complete the old plan before we move forward with this new one?
Okay, Ms. Gillespie.
You're you, Mayor Patterson. Thank you, Counselor Chappell. That's a great question. And I was myself going through the 2015 to 2020 plan today and starting to look at how retrospect did we do in terms of the big audacious goals we set of 500 million new investment, 5,000 jobs? So we'll be pleased to provide that report to the board as well as to city council in terms of accomplishments and where we can certainly improve and have lessons learned that we implement as we move forward with this new integrated plan.
Okay, and the other question was about who owns the plan?
Thank you, worship. Through you to Counselor Chappell. The plan is owned by the community. That's actually one of the key components of having the stakeholder engagement and stakeholder participation. But in terms of actually the measurement and the documenting of the outcomes, this will be jointly the responsibility of Kingston Economic Development and the city. One of the things we're doing as part of incorporating it into reporting to council and to the public is including the recommendations within the Cascade Management Software and Strategy Software that we currently use for city projects. So those reports are going to be available. Updates will be made in those, in that software. And that's available to council as part of the reports that we do on a quarterly basis to you.
Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Dejardin. That gives me a little bit more comfort.
And next is Counselor Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I was reading through this, I, of course, was struck by where the money comes from to do this. And it seemed to me that it was, in some really important ways, depended on senior government funding. And so, especially around the workforce trends and developments. So I'm just wondering, when potential funding expected? There's a long list of things to be done, but we haven't received any of the money yet.
Your worship, through you to the councillor.
Certainly with respect to many of the projects that were detailed in council strategic priorities, you referenced workforce development. I'm happy to say that over this past year, we've secured almost $1.4 million in federal and provincial funding to support a variety of projects. And with respect to some of the other recommendations, we do have applications in and are very hopeful for positive news in the near future.
Do you know when we are likely to hear back about those applications?
In the coming weeks.
Coming weeks, okay. So we have another item on the agenda concerned with the COVID resilience infrastructure grant program. How does that relate to this? This integrated strategy?
Perhaps I can defer that to a CAO hurdle?
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Counselor Patterson, for your question. The program for the COVID resilience has very specific categories that are applicable. As you may have seen in the report, some of them are related to long-term care. Others are more related to community type of initiatives. So we have transportation, for example, and recreation. So the projects that the city has identified and is submitting are ones that are related to long-term care and recreation primarily. So they're not, that's a complete separate program and is not connected in any way to the economic development strategy?
Right. Okay, fair enough. Like I was kind of wondering about that, because governments sometimes like to double camp. And so from the lists that are here under the federal government and the provincial government, there's not a lot of detail. So I just wondered, you know, when we're going to, our applications are in evidently, but when we would hear back? So thank you for that.
Okay, Counselor Hill.
Thank you, your worship. And I just wanted to say, just a quick comment on the level of consultation that took place throughout this exercise. I want to congratulate Donna and Craig and Laura. If you look at the report in some detail, I think you'll see this just, you know, and I know council was impatient to get this report and this information.
But, Counselor, can you phrase it as a form of a question?
Do you think you could have consulted with any more people than you did? Because I thought that was pretty impressive.
Thank you.
Your worship, through you to Counselor Hill. The, we're very grateful to the communications and customer experience team. The public consultation process was conducted through their team, opened for three weeks, promoted via social, print media and radio. We were very pleased with the 375 people that responded. It was a lengthy survey. So we're very grateful for people who took the time. In terms of the stakeholder consultations, it was across sectors and across the community. Significant efforts and time was spent. We're very grateful for everybody who contributed to the actual strategy.
Counselor Neal.
Thank you. I didn't think I had a question, but Counselor Hill's question spurred mine. This is probably a question for Ms. Gillespie, who's heard from me several times making the comment that do we properly and completely engage labor in some of these reports that we organize? Was labor, did we reach out to labor to comment on this strategy?
For you, Mayor Patterson. Thank you, Counselor Neal. I may need to defer to Laura in terms of all the groups that undertook interviews, but certainly it was not just the senior management firms that were involved with stakeholder consultations. I do know that through individual staff's interactions and talking to the draft plan and the framework throughout the summer months and the fall, examples would be, we would have colleagues that represent union on different committees, so that would certainly be part of an audience. But again, I would have to check with Laura if individual labor union representatives were reached out to.
Or was that, or Labor Council?
In the stakeholder list, no, they were actually not. As Donna had mentioned, through various focus groups and different conversations, there would have been participants that would have, participants in those categories that would have participated in broader conversations. But in terms of one-on-one, I would say no. Mr. Dejardin, you wanted to add to that?
Your worship, through you to councillor. One of the, I guess, positive outcomes of the economic recovery work that's underway right now is the collaboration with the Kingston District Labor Council. We've been very fortunate and very grateful for their contribution. One of the surveys that took place earlier this fall that did feed into the engagement work that we did as part of the strategy was around a worker's survey. And it wouldn't have been possible, I think we had over 1,200 responses to that particular survey that looked at economic development as well as sort of support programs directly for the frontline workers. The reach of that survey would not have been possible without the full and active participation of organized labor. We're very grateful for that.
Because as I read through it, I didn't see that particular aspect of it. In the future, as I've said before, they definitely should be included and engaged in any of these kinds of things. So, thank you.
Can I just, sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I just add? Is that okay? So just to add to that, thank you, Counselor Neal. In terms of that element, as Mr. Dejardin has mentioned, on the workforce piece, and that's one of the pillars, and again, I know we ran through them fairly quickly. But in the execution and implementation, the recommended theme under workforce includes several components that would have come from the work that Craig is talking about. That is a separate initiative that the city is undertaking specific to workforce, and that's where you'd see more detail around that, which wouldn't come out in the report because it's done sort of as a separate component. So I think you'll be pleased to see that incorporated in there, which is a work in progress at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you. Thank you all very much. And with that, we will move to our second delegate, or second briefing, rather. This evening, Dr. Karen Moore, Medical Officer of Health from KFLNA Public Health, will brief council with respect to the effects of the drug crisis in Kingston and its relationship to COVID-19 and housing and homelessness. Dr. Moore, second briefing in as many council meetings. So thank you for coming back to speak to us again, and you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Patterson and council, and through you, community members. Thanks very much for the opportunity to present on this issue. And thanks to all those that care for the homeless and provide services to those that have issues related to the use of drugs in our community. And also thank to Allison and Malcolm, who presented earlier today on a new innovation to help us detect early entry of illicit drugs into our community. Next slide. So I'm basically going to talk about this triple threat that we're experiencing. The opioid crisis has been going on for 20 years since Purdue Pharmaceutical started promoting the use of Percocet and Oxyset across North America. And also, we have obviously the pandemic crisis, and that's had a significant effect on our population. I'll show you some of the detail. As well, the drug supply in our community and across Ontario is just getting more and more toxic and causing more and more harm. And I'll show you local data regarding that. And concomitant with this, are housing issues for these vulnerable members of our community. And again, I hope, the presentation will be able to show you the issues that these members of our community are dealing with. And a reminder that I'm presenting data, but each data point reflects members of our community, some of whom have died from accidental overdose. And also a reminder, just following from the previous talk, that we are a kind and caring and compassionate community. And I very much thank council's support for the care of these individuals in our community. Next slide. So this is data related for the last four years of deaths related to opioids. And you can see that there's some seasonality across the years. The deaths sadly peak in the summertime and often go down over winter. And then you can see on the far right of the screen where during the pandemic, death rates seem to have taken off and risen across Ontario. And I'll show you some of our local data. And this may be due to the stress or anxiety or the social isolation associated with pandemic and the unintended consequences related to drug use in the community. Next slide. Also sadly, the largest population is getting affected. And just to put it in context with COVID, we've been going through COVID in our community for nine months. We've had no deaths, but related to opiates, we've had approximately 20 deaths. And principally, these are young members of our community. And we talked about years of potential life loss. They have the brightest years ahead of them and are cut down in their prime secondary to this illicit drug use and a tremendous loss for our community. Next slide. As well, there's a downward drift phenomenon out when you become addicted and use these drugs. Sometimes you lose your employment, and this material deprivation, the lowest would be, would actually be the highest income groups down to the highest material deprivation. The majority of people who die from opiates have the lowest income, are living and most vulnerable in our community, often homeless. And so the compassion that we show to these vulnerable members to provide housing, to provide an integrated care hub is most welcome, because many of them don't have shelter and need our care and our compassion. And in ethnic diversity, it's often the most ethnic diverse populations that have the highest death rates from opiates across Ontario. Next slide. As well, just to confirm that most overdoses are accidental. And this is pre and post the declaration of the pandemic. Accidental deaths from the pandemic across Ontario have gone up. And the other, you know, suicide and undetermined have remained stable or gone down. Next slide. The, again sadly, if you have a private residence, you are often dying alone in your own private residence, and that's my experience as a coroner investigating these deaths, that we haven't even had the opportunity to provide the lifesaving antidote, mainly naloxone for these individuals, because we haven't been able to change the behaviors of never using a loan. Next slide. And the most toxic component of the drugs is fentanyl. And fentanyl is like any opiate. It gives you euphoric effect. It's very, though, short-acting as compared to morphine or heroin. And hence, you have a rapid onset and offset of the drug. And it becomes very addictive, and there's a whole series of derivatives of fentanyl that we're finding in patients. And just for context of Allison and Malcolm's presentation, if I confiscate a drug at the scene and take it to Health Canada, it can tell me maybe three, four months later. Or after an autopsy, we take blood samples and try to figure out the cause of death. Again, that can take three months. So it can revolutionize to have point and care assessment of the drug supply, our response and our alerting to the community. Next slide. Also, it's never just one drug, and sadly, there's more and more contaminants or adulterants mixed in with fentanyl. And this is a whole slew of them that we're finding. And etizolam is a valium-like drug, so highly sedating, and in combination with fentanyl has been exceptionally lethal even just recently, in the last several weeks in southeastern Ontario, and taking young people from us far too early in life. And alcohol is often associated. Next slide. If you just slide down this list, you can come to Kingston-Frontenac, Addington Public Health, and you'll see the dark line and then the light line. The dotted line is the provincial rate, so even pre-pandemic, we were above the, on pre-pandemic rate. And the pandemic rate, we're above it as well. So we do have a higher opioid death rate as compared to Ontario and as you can see to many communities in Ontario. And as compared to Leeds-Grenville, they had had a significant rise in deaths post-pandemic as well. And Hastings is experiencing a significant rise in deaths, if you can see there. as well. And Hastings is experiencing a significant rise in deaths. If you can see there in Belleville, we've had recent three deaths of young people in dying from a contaminated and toxic drug supply. So we're not alone. And there are other communities that are suffering just like us. And this is an issue across North America, but the pandemic appears to have made it worse. And next slide. The purple line here is emergency department visits going from 2018 all the way to March of 2020. The gold line is hospitalizations. And sadly, the the green line or teal line is is deaths. And and you can see, this would illustrate the the number of calls to ambulances, the number of police calls, the number of emergency department visits and admissions to hospital, all of that adds up to a huge societal cost and huge impact on families and our our social structure. And this has been going on for for 20 years now, this pandemic. And I am not seeing much hope in sight. Next slide. Just for our area, as I said, we had 20 confirmed deaths for the first six months of 2020, or probable deaths, and had 17 in the year before. And and again, these are younger people. And the investigations are ongoing. We had four suspected overdose deaths in one week at the end of August 2020. And anytime there's a new drug in town, we can have a rise in deaths, because fentanyl is is grains of sands of fentanyl can kill you. And if you mix it with other toxic drugs like etizolam, it can have a fatal outcome very quickly. And they do tend to come in clusters like this sadly. Next slide. Again, the impact on on Frontenac paramedics and our EMS system and partners and police partners is dramatic. You can compare to all of 2019 to 2020, and our numbers are remaining similar and or will go up by the end of the year. Next slide. And our consumption treatment site, and thank you for supporting this site, certainly public health completely endorses its use. For the first seven months, had 164 visits, and then in August, had over 133 visits. And it in August, it was the busiest day of operations for the consumption treatment site with 33 total visits. And and when someone's using here at the consumption treatment site, there is supervision by a paramedic, their support, and they have been able to reverse overdoses and prevent deaths. Next slide. And six community advisories have been issued. When we see a sudden spike in overdoses, we have an intelligence network with our paramedics and our street health workers and those that use drugs that keep us informed of any new patterns in town, we try to get that communication out. Next slide. So we've had multiple releases in May and September, and it's our attempt just to provide situational awareness, which will only be enhanced by our ability to detect the drug at the scene in real time and inform the community. And the new drugs come in various different colors, and have various different toxicities across the southeast. Next slide. And in October, we had another news release with another new toxic lime green drug, which probably had some etizolam in it. It was also causing seizures and voluntary movements. And then sadly, in early December, Hastings Prince Edward reported substantial increases in overdoses, and very heavy sedation, and multiple overdoses required the an antidote called naloxone. But many didn't recover. And I think they've had three deaths in young folks. Next slide. Here it is again. Just a week later, they had to do further communication with the public regarding the toxic drug supply. And so it comes in waves, and it persists in the community and causes significant harm. Next slide. For the antidote, and I don't leave anywhere without my naloxone kit. And as a reminder, you can pick this up at the health unit. It's just like putting Otrivim nasal spray in your nose. It's a quick spray, and that can be a lifesaving drug as an antidote for all opioids or most opioids. We've given out over 460 kits and 482 this year. And we have a self-serve site where you can pick up the naloxone, and we distribute that to partners, our emergency department supplies it, as well as our street health and and community health center. Next slide. Again, the integrated care hub just recently had 17 overdoses seen, 14 in the consumption treatment side, and three occurred in the parking lot. And it was another new fentanyl that had arrived. And again, we just can't predict how toxic it is due to it being in the micrograms. And they've hunted handed out hundreds of kits in the last few weeks, and I believe have been saving many lives through their efforts. And again, the drug supply persists and be contaminated with etizolam. And next slide. And homelessness, many are individuals tend to use the consumption treatment site, and the established residence capacity there. And homeless individuals are at increased risk for overdose. The drug use is not consistent, so you can lose your ability or sensitivity to to the drug. And there are also health issues associated with the use of drugs, including all the bloodborne infections. Next slide. And so the consumption treatment site is currently for people who are snorting or injecting drugs. And we don't have a safe inhalation side to the consumption treatment site. But we may be requesting that in the future as part of the programming. Next slide. So thank you so much for listening to me and and an update on the impact of these illicit drugs on the health of our community. And thank you for your ongoing support of supporting these vulnerable members of our community.
Thank you very much, Dr. Moore, for for that presentation. At this point, I'll open the floor for questions. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dr. Moore, for that presentation. I'm wondering, with regard to geographically, is this a problem that is across the city in general?
There are pockets of overdose in many areas of the city. We do, we did try, do try to do ongoing mapping, so that we can provide naloxone in easily accessible areas of the community. But there are areas that have higher higher risk. And that's where I think we've tried to place the consumption treatment site, as well as the street health clinic and all other community health center, so that we provide care that's accessible and available to these individuals. But it is less in the suburb, rural areas, less in the suburban and more in the high dense areas, and it's associated with lower socioeconomic incomes.
Is there any sign of migration from different parts of the city once people have drug problems, and need to travel to those areas?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And you drew, I take it, if I took this properly, you, there's a direct connection, or relationship, rather, between the overdoses, the risk levels with housing and the lack of housing? Is that correct?
Yeah, I think there is an issue for this, these members of our community in housing, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, were you, did you call me?
Sorry, I had Counselor Ossanic next, and then Counselor Holland, I'll come to you next.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you so much, Dr. Moore, for always informing us on so many really important issues in our community. When we do have someone at the integrated care hub or street health center, right, who has taken one of these contaminated drug products, how how do we try to trace back as to where they got the drugs? Like, are the police working hand in hand, trying to trace back like which drug dealer, you know, they might have found the product from? Or does the buck sort of stop there? And it's just too hard, it's just too big an issue, and there's no way to really try to come to the source of where the contaminated products coming from, or the unpure products coming from?
Well, thank thank you, Counselor. I'm not that privy to how the police investigate the the drug source. I know that they have very active teams that try to limit the spread of these drugs, but they go very rapidly up and down the 401. A lot of the supply does come from Toronto. And there are different gangs associated with their distribution. The police have very good intelligence on this and are actively trying to make confiscations of these drugs. As soon as we are aware that there's a new drug in town, we have an advisory committee, and we do inform the police. And often, they're very much aware, and they're trying to find the source. They're not there to punish the drug user. They really want to find the source of these contaminated and dangerous drug supplies. And have been great partners in trying to decrease the presence of these drugs in our community. But it's overwhelming, and really needs a federal, provincial, and local response. The feds have to step up in terms of the importation of these drugs. They're often imported from Southeast Asia, China, and and the supply seems to be never ending, given that such small quantities can cause toxic results.
I see. And thank you for that answer. And then you just answered another question, too. So one of the reasons why we have such a high prevalence in our area could be that we're sitting right on the 401. It's the 401 corridor. And like we just heard in the economic strategy, we're right there in the center of Toronto, Montreal, Ottawa, where it's just our our location then.
Yep.
Thank you.
Counselor Holland, do you have a, did you have a question? Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so that, thanks, Dr. Moore. I have a couple of questions regarding naloxone. One is, you did mention that the the some of the more toxic drugs require multiple doses. Is it, is it being, are, how is the communication of the, is it common knowledge, I suppose, for people who have the kits, if there, if someone is outside of the the CTS, and there's a naloxone person around with a naloxone kit, do we have information available to ensure that just regular folks are are aware of how best to use those kits? And really, that's the only question.
Thank you, Counselor Holland. Yeah, I think street intelligence is very good in terms of how many doses of the naloxone work. One, one dose is usually good for for morphine, heroin. But these high strength carfentinals and fentanyl, it's often taking two, two doses. So the kits typically come with two. But most people would be carrying several kits, because we've had difficult reversals requiring three, four, five kits sometimes, due to the, you know, the mixing of these drugs, and and how they're used, you can get various concentrations every single time. So you really have to have the antidote, and you can't use alone. These drugs are so toxic and so dangerous.
Next is Counselor Chappell.
Thank you, Your Worship. Dr. Moore, I still have my side for the healthcare workers here. Thank you. I certainly appreciate the report and the tone that you set, educating all of us. My question is really regarded regarding the opportunity now with spectroplasmodics, looking at the data that you're presenting, seems to be dated back a number of days. And and perhaps, you know, after an incident has taken place. But the opportunity to test a narcotic or a drug prior to its consumption helps educate the user, helps educate the the team that's offering support. But I'm wondering if you, if you, perhaps the perspective of of this this testing system, but then also push back to the drug dealers that, hey, listen, I'm not using your drug because it was spiked last time. Do you think there might be some of that trust and buildup, and more people would use that center and have cleaner, cleaner drug supply, and perhaps even go the next step to towards removing themselves from the the addiction as well?
But that's, Counselor Chappell, thanks so much for that question. And certainly, that that's a hope. I think early identification of contaminated drugs and toxic drugs in our community is a hope that we can have early warning, especially a new drug in town, a new derivative, because it's potential that we're seeing it again, seeing new drugs coming in very rapidly, because they're all trying to skirt the international, national, and local laws with their designer drugs. And then it's the contamination. You think you're buying one product, and it actually has X, Y, and Z in it. And X, Y, and Z cumulatively are deadly. So if we can identify that at the point of use, and get that information out, I think that can be lifesaving. And as well, Counselor Neal has raised a question about safe drug supply. I think we'll have to address that as our death rates continue to take the young members of our community away from us. These are brothers and sisters and parents of individuals. And it continues to be a significant loss for our communities. And I think we have to look at decriminalization, and we have to look at a safe drug supply, and certainly trying to educate more and more individuals how toxic this current supply is, and look for alternatives, including substitution, and include an abstinence. But substitution therapy is is usually a good transition.
Thank you very much for your clarity. And the work that you do. Counselor Neal.
Thank you. And you anticipated part of my question. I I really am looking forward to what the delegation spoke about, which is creating an early warning system for toxic doses. Are you aware that, I understand that the Police Chief Organization of Ontario have suggested looking at the merits of decriminalization, and that indeed Lisbon, over a decade ago, was was the first community to decriminalize hard drugs, and they seem to have much lower death rates in Portugal than we have here in Canada. Is, would you like to comment on that?
Thank you very much, Counselor Neal. I I think we seriously have to address decriminalizing. That's going to be an essential component of our response, and it has worked well in other jurisdictions, including Portugal, where they, instead of using all the funds for enforcement, where, you know, the war on drugs didn't work, they then put that money into social supports, HIV prevention, and housing, and treating these individuals as members of the community that deserve compassion and care. And that change, I think, revolutionized what occurred in Portugal. They saw a dramatic decrease in deaths, dramatic decrease in addiction, and reduction in HIV. That's an approach I think deserves good study for Ontario, Canada, and particular for our region, that we've suffered 20 years of this. If you look back, we have data that long of ongoing deaths of young people in our community from from this scourge. And we have to try something new.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Thank you, Andrew, you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. We're talking about numbers and the type of drugs. But I wonder if you could share a little bit more about, like, paint us a little picture of the young people. Like, how do young people fall into this trap of drug addiction?
Oh, it's often a troubling journey. If you review the histories of some of these individuals, they've been raised in difficult families and/or had adverse childhood experiences or experienced trauma at a young age. And that combination is thought to scar and predispose to addiction. And then all you need is the exposure. These drugs, any one of us, including myself, could easily get addicted to these drugs. They're very powerful, very toxic. And if you have a predisposition from those adverse childhood experiences, a difficult or traumatic upbringing, that can predispose you to this. And that combination is exceptionally dangerous. And that's why, you know, the public health approach of, and our approach as a community, supporting families, giving housing, basic income guarantee, ensuring equity, and a city that tries to build the best parks and the best libraries in neighborhoods that are often the most difficult or have the most difficult troubles. I think that's a brilliant approach, that it will be that proactive, long-term solution to supporting the families and minimizing the traumas and giving them the best opportunities to succeed. I love a program of ours at Public Health called Healthy Baby and Healthy Children, where we support families that are having difficulties, preconception, conception, all the way through to grade six, and try to minimize the harms in adverse childhood experiences. But that's a long-term vision of 10, 15, 20 years where we'll see a change. So it's a combination of all these, long-term and short-term, that we can have a better, more caring and compassionate community. And, you know, I think our agency, together with you, was in it for the long haul.
Thank you, that was a good explanation. You also mentioned that many are homeless. So could you speak a little bit to the correlation? What's first, is the drug use first or their homelessness first?
Yeah, it often is drug use first. Drug use can lead to family instability, loss of job, and loss of employment. And then the, what's often called a downward drift, where you end up, as a result of the addiction, on the street and more and more socially isolated from your family and friends and community. And then the fatal overdoses often occur in those circumstances. People are alone, by themselves, with no support. And that's why an integrated care hub and consumption treatment site is so important. That it might be the only social aspect of these people's lives right now. And it's tenuous, but it's important.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks, next is Counselor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. Thank you, Dr. Moore. You mentioned you never leave without your naloxone kit. I know that many of us on council have them as well. I'm wondering if you could tell the public where they can pick one up? And probably as, or more importantly, how would they know when to administer one?
Oh, thank you, thank you for that, Counselor Kylie. So any pharmacy in town, you have to show an OHIP card for any pharmacy in town. You can request a naloxone kit and just say, you don't have to give a reason. You can just say there's a risk in your family or friends. I certainly, my boys were in university. I'm insured they had them, because you never know if someone's going to take a drug at a party or any situation. So I ensured my kids had them too and informed their friends. If you don't have an OHIP card, you can go to any one of our public health offices. So we have four across KFLN8 where you can pick up a naloxone kit. And then Street Health Clinic also has them, and the Consumption Treatment Site has them, and HARS has them. So they are available, they are accessible. The signs and symptoms of an overdose from opiate, it's typical that individuals who are overdosing will have a decreased level of consciousness. So they will slowly, what would be called nod off, and lose consciousness. And the biggest, most toxic effect of opioids is that they stop your breathing center. And you'll watch the breathing will, typically someone breathes around 16 times a minute. It'll go 16 times a minute down to eight. Their color may change. And that's the point at time where you really have to be using naloxone. If you let it go too long, the heart stops. It gets very slow because of the lack of oxygen. And we've seen it on TV, the flat line occurs. So you really have to provide naloxone as someone's nodding off, losing consciousness, and their breathing slowing. And that's life-saving for these individuals.
And a follow-up to that, I recognize, was it a year or two ago, that the federal government passed the Good Samaritan law that allowed for essentially amnesty if an overdose was called in? How does that relate to someone administering naloxone? Are there any consequences of giving it when it wasn't needed? Could you talk a bit more, just help people feel comfortable with this process?
No. So as I said, the naloxone, the kits that we have are just a nasal spray. So they're just like using Oak Trevin. If you've ever used a nasal spray, you pull the counter back, you spray it in the nose. This will not reverse any other drug except an opiate. So a pure benzodiazepine or alcohol toxicity, this doesn't reverse it. But for any opiate, it will reverse it. At one dose or two doses, you should see the breathing rate coming back and the level of consciousness coming back. And by that time, you already should have called 911 and/or be prepared to start CPR. And all kits have the basic instructions on CPR. The, in two doses, normally will get breathing back and allow someone to gain consciousness once again. And I'm sorry, you had one additional question. I don't think I answered.
It was just about the legalities around giving an application slash calling EMS in a case of overdose?
Yeah, so the Good Samaritan Act, you would, the provision of this drug doesn't reverse anything else and has no allergic reactions associated with it. So this is actually a wonder drug to give. It has no negative side effects in terms of dropping someone's blood pressure. It only can reverse the opiate. And so there's been no litigation against anyone using this to help save someone's life for an overdose. And it won't cause harm in other situations. Like, let's say if it was a diabetic whose sugar was going down, causing them to lose consciousness. This will not cause harm to that individual, even though they need sugar.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Okay, see none. Dr. Moore, thank you very much again for that important briefing tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. So, so folks, it is 9:38, and we have just gotten to the bottom of page one of our council agenda. So based on that observation, I'm going to propose a couple of things. First of all, I'm going to propose that we'll take a 10-minute break and then start into, to continue into our agenda. And what I will propose is that we will go as far as through report number 11 from the Nominations Advisory Committee. And at that point, we will recess until 6:00 PM tomorrow, at which time we will begin with report number 12 from the Administrative Policies Committee regarding short-term rentals. And so based on, based on that time, point of order, Counselor Neal.
Planning Committee tomorrow has probably the heaviest agenda.
Counsel, so Counselor Neal, any committee meets on Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I apologize. It's been a long day.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have another Zoom meeting elsewhere, but I'll see what I can do.
Point of order, Counselor Chappelle.
Thank you, Your Worship. Tonight, we've had presentations on the topic that came up on the Administrative Policies Committee. I would much prefer to address that item this evening rather than have it punted for tomorrow.
I understand that, Counselor Chappelle. My experience is that when we deal with contagious issues very late at night, the quality of our debate and discussions can sometimes suffer. So that's why I'm ruling in that.
You should allow, you should allow council to make that consideration.
So I will allow council to challenge the chair and overwhelm me.
I'll challenge the chair.
So Counselor Chappelle has challenged the chair. That is challenging my ruling to call a recess until tomorrow after report number 12 from the Administrative Policies Committee. Okay, so with the challenge of the chair, both you and I have a minute or a brief amount of time to be able to make our case, and then council will vote. Counselor Chappelle, you have the floor.
Awesome, okay. Sitting on Policy Committee, Administrative Policy Committee for the last two years, this issue has come up a number of times. Tried to find ways to merge it through and find compromise. Think we finally have reached that situation. We had great debates at the Administrative Policies Committee. We've heard very passionate pleas and support of, on that topic tonight. So if we were going to break, I would urge that while all this information is fresh in our frame of mind, that it would be best for us to resolve the issue and have a vote this evening. And that is why, if we were to move things on the agenda, I would definitely move that we address that issue this evening rather than waiting for tomorrow. I understand we've had long discussions already, and it's almost 9:42. And with that in mind, I will give my remaining 15 seconds to you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. So I agree, I think it's a very important discussion and important issue that we need to handle well. I think, given the amount of other things on our agenda, I believe that for council to make the best decision that it can, that it's better to attack it fresh. And it's only till 6:00 PM tomorrow. Certainly, please welcome again to tune in, to watch that debate discussion. We've been able to hear from all members of the public, so it shouldn't be inconveniencing to anyone. But again, I do believe that in the experience of six years doing this job, that you have a sense of what you think will help council to function the best. But again, I do fully respect it is council's decision of what it would like to do. So with that, we will call the vote on the challenge to the chair. So a yes vote is to vote with Counselor Chappelle, so that we will continue and get through report number 12 with the short-term rental. A vote no would be to instead recess as I originally proposed. So with that, we will call the vote then on the challenge to the chair. Who was in favor? Opposed? And that loses by a vote of 3 to... Okay, so with that, I will, yes, point of order, Counselor Bowman.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. Is it not to reorder the agenda to deal with that first, that the delegation spoke to me? Meaning the remaining portion of the agenda tomorrow? Is that feasible?
Give me one minute. So Counselor Bowman, I've already ruled on this. The other thing to keep in mind is that there is a whole other briefing that is attached to this item as well. So there were reasons to throw that initially. So based on that ruling and based on council's vote, it's 9:43. We propose we'll take a 10-minute break, and then we will return at 9:53 to continue with the agenda. We propose we'll take a 10-minute break and then we will return at 9:53 to continue with the agenda.
We the undersigned or concerned residents of the residential area in proximity to this site will degrade the property value and they strongly oppose the aforementioned applications for official plan amendment. It's been already submitted. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other petitions? Okay, we do have several motions of congratulations and condolence. First moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ostroff. The sincere condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to the family and friends of Larry Mav who passed peacefully on December 4th, 2020. Mav was a Canadian professional hockey player, executive in the Ontario Hockey League, and was a head coach, general manager, and senior consultant with the Kingston Frontnecks. He will be sorely missed by his many friends, family, and community members. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ostroff. The sincere congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Councillor Ryan Bowman and his wife Jaclyn and the birth of their son Raphael Louis Carl, born on December 5th, weighing seven pounds, 11 ounces. Raphael is welcomed by his older sisters Isabel, Alexa, and Sophia, and older brother Alma. Congratulations and best wishes to the Bowman family. Looking good, looking good. And number three, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ostroff. The sincere congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to Councillor Ryan Bowman and his wife Jaclyn and the birth of their son Raphael Louis Carl, born on December 5th, weighing seven pounds, 11 ounces. Raphael is welcomed by his older sisters Isabel, Alexa, and Sophia, and older brother Alma. Congratulations and best wishes to the Bowman family. Looking good, looking good. And number three, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ostroff. The sincere congratulations of Kingston City Council be extended to the students and staff of the brand-new Kingston Secondary School. KSS officially opened its doors for the first time today, offering state-of-the-art facilities and a new and modern school experience to hundreds of secondary school students in our community. Congratulations to the Limestone District School Board and all those who helped make this new school a reality. Number four, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Counselor Bowman. The condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Fran Tulley, Vanessa and Mark Garrettson and their family on the passing of Vanessa's father, Don Tulley. Don grew up on a fishing and hunting lodge in Plaidna, Ontario. He attended St. Lawrence College in the 70s where he met his wife Fran, married 47 years, and started his trade in sheet metal, which eventually turned into his own successful company until retirement less than two years ago. Don will be greatly missed by many other extended family and friends. Our thoughts are with his family during this difficult time. So we will call the votes. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have no deferred motions, so we will now move on to reports. First, we have report number seven from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Doherty, seconded by Counselor Stroud, that report number seven from the Chief Administrative Officer consent be received and adopted.
So there are three clauses. Would anyone like any of the clauses separated? Okay, seeing no separations, we will vote on them as a whole. Number one, proposed amendment to Streets bylaw number 2004-190 on Stewart Street and license agreement. Number two, remote sensing and mapping program, near-map license renewal, single source. Number three, investing in Canada infrastructure program, COVID-19 resilience infrastructure program. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, next we have report number eight from the CAO.
Moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor McLaren, that report number eight from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, the first clause is the recommended integrated economic development strategy. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And Counselor Chappelle opposed. Okay. Number two, economic development organization service level agreement renewal. Counselor Chappelle.
Sorry, I couldn't find the mute button. Worship. I was doing some research and there are other municipalities that have an economic development wing. For example, Chamber of Commerce provides all the marketing for the city to develop. You know, there are cities outside in Western Canada that have a private corporation to do the economic development. I'm wondering, since we're pursuing an SLA, a service level agreement, and we don't have the results of the last SLA, why it wouldn't be prudent to go out to market and see who else could be a service provider for the services of this initiative? And another would have spent all over, well, $40,000 for the city rural development and what, $120 for the city KEDCO development plan? I'd like to see why we wouldn't go out to the private sector and see if there's other service providers, perhaps Chamber of Commerce or other Queen's University or maybe other private sector entrepreneurs that can deliver the same services for a lesser cost.
CAO Hurdle.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Counselor Chappelle, for this question. It's an interesting, definitely an interesting approach and is something that the city always has the ability to look into. From a staff perspective, we are not recommending this approach. The current agreement that we have, so we currently have an SLA and council has been receiving reports on a regular basis from the Economic Development Corporation. So this current SLA that we have does indicate that we would have to provide the Economic Development Corporation notification if we intended to actually terminate the services and there would have to be a breach in the agreement as well. So this is a current SLA because we haven't started the new one. So this would have to be something that council would direct staff to do and we would have to look into the legalities of that approach and report back to you. We would highly recommend you would want this information before moving in that direction.
Counselor Chappelle.
So it indicates to me that what's pursued as an avenue for consideration and your answer was robust enough to accept it for this. Thank you, CAO Hurdle.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Counselor Hudson.
I would just like to say briefly that I quite liked the integrated plan and that it's based on my time on KEDCO on a couple of occasions. This is the sharpest, most incisive and focused plan that I think I've seen and that has legs. I mean, it'll last over a long time. There'll be other initiatives, no doubt, but I think it's well worth the effort and the investment that we'll be making. So I think the word focus occurs, I don't know how many times, but a lot of times in that document. And I think that is exactly what it's doing. And it's based on things that we already do and we're bringing it together, as it says, in an integrated way. So I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counselor Stroud.
Thank you, worship. The only thing that I want to bring up is this, is the timelines. So it's an integrated plan and the logic is clear for all to see. You can agree or disagree with the minutia of the plan, but I think we all, there's consensus to have an integrated plan. That's not a contentious issue. The five-year term for this SLA and the language accompanying it, it talks about aligning with the priorities of city council. Now, we all know the city council is a four-year term and that our strategic plan is already halfway through its course. And none of the dates of this SLA align with council's term or strategic plan. It's to start, and I know part of it is legacy because of the other one expiring, but it starts January 1st, 2021, which is just after halfway through our term. And it goes to December 31st, 2025, which is actually one year before the end of the following term. So it doesn't align at all with our strategic plan. In fact, it aligns more with the next strategic plan. So, which is unknown. So I really question the prudence of a five-year agreement. So I would like to know from the CAO, why is it? What is the compelling reason for a five-year service agreement on this file?
CAO Hurdle.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Counselor Stroud, for this question. I think it might have come up as well when we talked about the Tourism Kingston Agreement at one of our recent council meetings that also had a five-year term. So this is consistent with Tourism Kingston. You are correct that there will be another council strategic priority that will take place during that period of time. Having said that, the SLA is really looking at setting some, what I would call the more detailed benchmark. If there are some adjustments that need to be made, they would most likely be along the lines of the integrated strategy. Because if there needed to be a shift in focus, it would need to be reflected in the strategy. So we have left some language in the agreement that would actually provide for some flexibility. I think you had asked a question about Tourism Kingston as well, which I did indicate that there was some language in there that provided the flexibility to adjust essentially the strategy to be in sync with the council priority. Should that change during the five-year period?
I hear what you're saying, but it still doesn't answer the question of why a five-year term. You seem to be saying the reason for the five-year term is because that's what Tourism Kingston is already doing. I'm sorry, but this is city council and that doesn't have any weight here. What we did is a four-year term. Our term started in 2018 and goes for four years. So either we have to remove the language that says it aligns with our strategic plan or we have to change the term so that it will expire at the end of our term and we can start a new term after we have a new strategic plan. That would make sense. Also, I would say that there is not very much in this integrated plan that specifically speaks to our strategic plan. The one that we are working with right now. It speaks to the integrated strategy, which on the ongoing integration between various organizations that are being integrated, but it doesn't really integrate with our strategic plan, I would say. So, you know, I don't mind, I don't have a problem with renewing the SLA. I don't want to do it under false pretenses, so I'm not sure what to do. And I think, I suspect I'll just have to vote against because of that reason. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Hill.
Thank you, your worship. And I just, I'm hoping that we're kind of hitting a point of jump off in a way. You know, the old KEDCO and all the concerns about it, that's sort of dead and buried. We've had a transitional period of economic development to group, but I think they've really gotten their ship in order. And I think that's absolutely indicated by what we were presented with tonight with the strategic plan. And now hopefully we're going to move to almost a new organization, a new focus that's linked very much with what the city is doing. I would disagree with Counselor Stroud in that regard. And we're going to hopefully rename it and I think put some of that residue that Counselor Chappelle has been concerned about for a long time behind us and begin to move forward in terms of working very closely and collaboratively with a very, very good plan that is indeed linked to the city's strategic plan. So we kind of need to put some of that stuff behind us and kind of, and move forward. And I think this is the perfect opportunity and the perfect report that will allow us to do that. We may need to at some point amend the SLA to make, you know, make it reflect more the timelines that we're working with. I don't disagree with that, but I do think it's time to put some of that residual hard feeling behind us and really start to look forward instead of backward. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ostroff.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And I would echo Counselor Hill's comments. I think that this is... I think that this is, it's it's really, it really works out well, actually. I think even in 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 succession and how how a new council could look at it. That everything is in place, this effort that we've put together to to come out strong and in alignment is and for an extended time with flexibility is reflected here. And then in the next council, if it's three years in, it gives them the experience so they'll know exactly the the changes they need for the next council. So I think it, I think it it shows strength to me and good succession management. And so I I would, and I just want to just thank Counselor Hill for those comments. Let's put the past behind us and and know that we we are starting strong now, aligned and and great things can happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on clause two? Okay, so we will call the votes then. All those in favor? Opposed? That carries by a vote of ten to two, Counselor Chappelle and Stratopose. Okay, clause three, Mayor's Task Force on Housing Implementation Plan. Counselor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'm wondering if staff could speak to this. My question, which is about how COVID nineteen is projected to impact the population numbers that were kind of the foundation of a lot of the work in this report. Is there any thought maybe from the CIO or others about the change in the potential growth of the city? Because that obviously would impact key figures like vacancy rate and so forth.
CEO Hurdle.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, Counselor Kylie, for this question. I I have to admit that I don't have some hard data to to offer to council. But definitely some observations that we have seen in the last number of months with COVID nineteen. So there there is no question that currently we are seeing less students, for example, within our downtown core primarily due to the fact that classes are taking place online. We know that this is having an impact in terms of of our vacancy currently. But we do anticipate that within the next year or two that will change as well. And we will start to see again a rise in in number of students, most likely that will be coming to to our city. So we know that's probably something that's more temporary. We are also aware that because of the work from home or remote work that some people have are looking to relocate to certain areas such as Kingston, for example, where there's it's a smaller city and in a slower pace of life. So we are aware that some people are relocating from some larger regions. We don't have that yet. And we anticipate that we'll probably get more of that in early twenty twenty one.
Commissioner Agnew, did you have anything you wanted to add as well?
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Patterson. So just definitely echoing the comments made by CEO Ayo Hurdle. Just more informally, along those lines, having discussions with colleagues across the province and just also checking in with with Watson and Associates as we're completing some additional work with them as they were the company that we worked with related to the population housing projections, Counselor Kylie, that you're referring to. Certainly, we've started to have that conversation and also because they work so extensively across the province, asking some of those questions from an overall like economic modeling perspective and what their thoughts are and the the information and the advice or the thoughts that they've provided to us just more informally at this point in time are aligned with what with what Lanny has had to say with respect to seeing some temporary impacts, but long term not seeing especially in the post-secondary population, the expected long term impact associated with that. At least we're not getting that data at this that at this point in time. So we're not anticipating major impacts to the projections that we presented as part of that last round of data, but we are certainly following that.
Okay, so my follow up through you, Mayor Patterson, is maybe, Miss Agnew, you you just anticipated that and said what I was thinking next, which is it wouldn't be time to change any numbers based on your conversations and based on our scenes would be premature to do that.
Yes, thank you. And through you, Mayor Patterson, I think it would be premature to do that. I think, you know, we need to give it some more time to see what some of the the long term planning or some of the, especially with some of our community partners. We're not seeing that at this point in time, but certainly that is something that we are watching. And if we feel that there are significant changes or pieces of data that are coming across the table that would require us to look at anything, we would certainly be doing that and advising council accordingly.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, next is Counselor McLaren.
Thank you. Just a quick question, or actually several questions. There's a lot of continues or continue to do something in this report. So I'm very conflicted about this particular report and I'm definitely thinking of voting against it, but I'm concerned that if I were all these implementation things that say continue that have been authorized by council in the past. Will you be taking that if if it were to fail? Would you be taking that as stopping anything that's already been approved by council in the past?
CEO Hurdle.
Thank you. And and through you. So thank you, Counselor McLaren, for that question. You're correct that there are a number of initiatives that refer to to continuing. In particular, if I if I use the example of of trying to create more secondary housing units is something that was identified. We have already been working on that. So and then the report shows that the numbers are much higher, for example, this year than they were last year and so on. We we intend to continue and and the provincial legislation actually tell us that that we should be doing that. So there are a number of those things that we have started because it was part of the council's strategic priorities as well, not just the mayor's task force on housing report, but it's something that was identifying council priorities. So we intend to continue that work definitely in terms of trying to advance housing, the number, increasing the number of housing units, but also making more affordable housing units available to the community.
Thank you. So my understanding from that is that you will continue to do all the good work that is being done now. With regards to some of the stuff on page five of eight, where it's talking about staffing needs and what staff have to do. I recall from the original report, I believe it was page forty three, where it recommended that we get fewer reports or that we ask staff, councilors should be asking for fewer reports that are in order to streamline the process and make it easier for developers. Is that recommendation from the original report in in this implementation in any way being looked at as it was in the original reports where?
CEO Hurdle.
Sorry. Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. The original report included that recommendation. So that recommendation did come from the task force. Our direction from council was to put together an implementation plan that could actually look at implementing those recommendations from the task force. So we will be reviewing these options that would look at either reducing the number of of studies or trying to to fast track in some cases where it may be feasible. This is something, of course, that we would bring back to council for for more input. But that was a a direction that was included in the original report that council endorsed.
Yes, I find that one little dangerous in the sense that we're taking the good planning of democracy and facing it off against the good planning of elites, specialized planners. And that's reflects me as a classist principle against democracy there. So I would be very, very much against that on very many points. I also noticed that one of the things that was missing in the original report, and I guess will be missing here, is the stabilization of land prices. There is nothing in here that's being interpreted that we should be trying, say, with the zoning bylaw or with the official plan said in the comprehensive zoning bylaw to stabilize the price of land going forward. That seems to be one of the major things that makes things much more expensive. Did I miss it or is that just not there?
Commissioner.
Thank you. And through you, I'll I'll certainly provide some thoughts on that. And if if the CIO has some additional commentary, she can certainly provide that after I've had a chance to address council. So, Counselor, you're correct that there's not an explicit one recommendation that speaks to that. Really, the best way to deal with that and and that we are systematically doing that is through the creation of good, clear policy. So a good example of of what we just brought forward on Williamsville, where we are tackling that piece specifically by removing ambiguity in the policy that created some of the the challenge that we've had with increasing land prices in Williamsville over the last seven years. Well, we are following that exact same thinking and approach with respect to the secondary plan we're working on for Central Kingston right now. And that will also correspondingly, of course, be going into the zoning bylaw. A lot of what we're doing right now in the preparation of that second draft is stripping out ambiguity or portions of it that were really more subject to interpretation. And in a zoning bylaw, you really don't want there to be interpretation. You want there to be black and white policies. So we're doing a lot of that cleanup and through that process indirectly, that is going to have the impact of of looking at stabilizing land prices because there's clarity of what's permitted on that piece of land, which drives, which helps to drive its value.
Okay, so that's good. But did I hear you right? That you're doing that somewhere else, not in this particular document?
Sorry, what I what I was saying is that it's implicitly part of all of the policy work we're doing right now, but it's not identified as a standalone recommendation specifically in this in this document.
So I'm glad you're doing that. It's unfortunate it's not here. Now, one of the last one, I guess, that I have time for is in page three of eight. Did I read this correctly? You will not actually be initiating any co-op, co-op housing. Is that, did I, did I read that correctly?
So so I think that the implementation plan is based on the recommendations from the task force.
Yes, and I believe the task force did talk about the possibility of that. And you're saying, no, we're not going to do that. So did I read that correctly? Or are you actually going to help or initiate co-op housing? Because that seemed to be, in my view, the most likely, most sustainable way of actually helping to solve the crisis.
CEO Hurdle.
Thank you. And and through you, Mr. Mayor. So so, Mr. Mayor, you are correct that all of these recommendations from the task force were endorsed by council in March. So if council would like to go in a different direction than what was endorsed in March by, as presented by the task force, I'm assuming that could require reconsideration at this point because it hasn't been one year. But to answer your question, Counselor McLaren, I think maybe our our language wasn't clear enough in response to this particular recommendation. What we're indicating is we will support co-ops that are existing or may want to establish themselves. We will support them. For example, we have actually reached out to Kingston Co-op to be part of the project that council endorsed on thirteen sixteen Princess Street, so they could actually continue to grow. So that's something that staff initiated and approached them. But what I wanted to make sure was clear is that staff were not going to try to establish and and new co-ops, but rather work with the existing ones or support community groups that may want to establish a new co-op.
Okay, so as I see it, that's good, but it's not the best. So everything that is here is good. And it sounds to me like it's going to get done either through or without this, through other things in the past. But there doesn't seem to be anything actually that is new and good. So I'm still debating, but it looks like I'm not convinced yet that this might be a good idea. A good new idea in a sense. But what you are doing is at least a start. Thank you.
Next is Counselor Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a couple of questions about the part of the report that concerns what we are doing. And another one on the implementation plan. The I've talked to staff and the mayor about this. So when we're talking about the development at thirteen sixteen Princess Street, where's the application for funding from CMHC or the federal government at this point in time?
So I just, I'm just confirming that that's this is in the implementation of the Mayor's Task Force report. I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah.
Right out of there. Yeah.
Thank you. CEO Hurdle.
Sorry.
Thank you. And and through you, Mr. Mayor. So the both applications have been submitted. So Counselor Hudson, you might be aware that through the CMHC process, each organization has to submit their own application because they will end up being the property owner of each development. So both of them have been submitted. And our local MP has been made aware as well of this particular submission. And we've been working with CMHC representatives as well.
Okay, thank you. Regarding secondary units, I think a couple of these two or three counselors are hearing about this. It indicates that there were a number of permits and the idea is pursue higher densities. And originally I did vote for this going back a number of years. However, it says that secondary units can contribute to making more affordable units. But are they in fact contributing to our affordability problem? That's the question. And is the city keeping track of of this? Because what I'm hearing is that basically secondary units are being converted to student housing in the downtown area for the most part. And it's causing some consternation on the part of the people who live in those neighborhoods.
Yes, Commissioner Agnew.
Thank you. And through you. So we have seen a pretty successful and significant uptake in additional permits for second units since we brought the regulatory framework over the past year to allow them as a right in many parts of the city. So certainly we are seeing some some applications or some just building permits, depending on the nature of what's being requested in the neighborhoods that are around post-secondary institutions. But I wouldn't say that the development of second units is exclusive to those areas only. We are seeing them pretty widespread across the city in a variety of contexts. So what we are tracking is is in terms of of the permit data specifically in the location of them. We don't have a tracking program in place with respect to what rents those are being offered for on the private market. And we would have difficulty, I think, obtaining all that information and being able to track it. But what we can say is that what we are seeing is a number of property owners taking advantage of the existing zoning that we have in place now to facilitate the development of additional units, which is leading to additional additional rental units in a variety of neighborhoods across the city. Certainly, there are concentrated pockets in certain areas where there are greater housing demands than others, but it has been a fairly significant citywide effort that we've seen in terms of the number of permits overall. But on the specific issue related to affordability and is that solving? I think it would speak to certain parts of the population, depending on the area where the unit is created, the size of the unit, and then the the rent that would be derived from that unit about, you know, which elements of the housing market would it would appeal to or would be available to. But certainly, it's it's not just geographically located to one area of the city only.
Okay, thank you. I I do hope we're tracking this because part of the reason for secondary suites was not an increase in supply of housing, but to increase the for to allow for more affordable units. And my question is, as I think you appreciate it, is is that in fact happening? And especially in certain parts of the city and the downtown. So in particular. So I mean, when when units are going for six, seven, eight hundred, nine hundred dollars a bedroom door, that's not affordable to anybody but a group of students. And they have to be housed, there's no doubt, but it doesn't really do anything for affordability problem. So we just approved the Williamsville plan and it's in here and that's good and and has zoning permits. zoning permissions possibly for another 3,300 units, which will be something to see, I think. The, will those, those developments that may follow the plan, the Williamsville plan, be held to, how to be developed within a particular length of time? I know we discussed this issue a number of times. I can't remember whether we actually implemented it, or if we did, when, where, and when.
Ms. Eagan.
So, thank you, and through you. We are in the process right now of, of developing a couple of tools to help with that piece specifically. We are looking at adjusting the sunset clauses and creating greater language within our site plan agreements with respect to the time that construction needs to be going from the time that site plan is, approval is issued. So, that's one particular piece. But we're also working with Utilities Kingston right now and doing some background work to look at how we could potentially bring forward for council's consideration some additional tools to look at servicing capacity and the allocation of that servicing capacity, putting timing limitations upon the allocation of that servicing capacity to make sure that we're most effectively using the capacity that's in the system, and we're not looking at additional expansions or upgrades of pipes unnecessarily, based on there being capacity that's allocated to developments that haven't moved forward. And we have certainly, and that was flagged as part of some of the work done by the task force, where there were certain circumstances where there are planning permissions for hundreds of units that hadn't yet been realized or constructed in the market over a number of years. So, those are two specific things that we're working on right now that, that will be delivering to council in 2021 for consideration. CAO Hurdle may have some additional comments to what I've provided.
Thank you. So, we purchased a couple of buildings for our homelessness, 113 Lower Union, 805 Ridley. And I support that, that's good. And so, according to the report, we got a total of up to 44 affordable supporting housing units out of those purchases. So, my question is, with the addition of the Integrated Care Hub, is the city supplying enough housing to accommodate the homeless population in Kingston? I asked staff about this a couple of months ago, and, yeah, at least. And it was on, they thought, staff thought they probably had that in hand, but they weren't really sure. So, I'm just wondering, because it depends on how you measure the homelessness.
CEO Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. So, councillor Hutchison, I, I'm gonna start, and Ms. Nordograph is also on, on the meeting, and she might want to add to what I, I have to provide, the information I have to provide. So, I think councillor Hutchison, you're correct. It all depends on how we look at homelessness. So, if we look at individuals that we are serving primarily through our shelter system and the Integrated Care Hub, when we look at the addition of those supportive housing units, which they will become in 2021, I know they have been utilized as shelter space in the interim because we've, we've had a need with COVID-19, we recognize that. But in the long term, they will be turned into supportive housing. So, when we look at that, in addition to the shelter space that we have in the Integrated Care Hub, I would say that based on the numbers that we know and that we can monitor and track, we are probably doing much better. Are we meeting all the needs? I think that would be very difficult to assess, but Ms. Nordograph might want to add to that.
Thank you, CEO Hurdle, and through you, Mayor Patterson. Absolutely. Just to add to that, we also are working with, on a couple of other developments. So, council may remember that we also supported a private development in partnership with Anguina that will be providing additional supportive housing units. We're also, again, council has had conversations about the developments on Albert Streets for particularly supportive housing or transitional housing for youth. And, and kind of in addition to, to CIO Hurdle's comments, we are really kind of continuing to track and monitor and try to respond based on a new way of measuring homelessness. And we're really trying to identify the different priority groups. We're obviously looking at youth and women and, and single adults and families. So, we're, we're definitely kind of trying to be on top of it with the way that we measure homelessness and response, and try to come up with a variety of different projects.
Okay, thank you. I think that was perhaps as accurate as it could be under the circumstances. The, finally, a question about the implementation plan. The one idea I saw, there's a lot of things, as councillor McLaren said, that are continuing or, you know, being developed, and that's to be expected. So, so, I'm, the idea I thought was interesting was the implementing the community improvement plans to encourage affordable housing development. In other words, set aside a portion of property taxes from new market rentals, as with the Brownfields programs, to pay for affordable housing. It seemed to me that there might be some possibility there. It'd be quite different, and you still have to pay for the services that are coming in to the original housing.
Thirty seconds, thirty seconds, councillor.
Yep. When will the report on SIP options be forthcoming? It just says it's coming, but it didn't say when, I don't think.
Who, who'd like to say that? Yes, CEO Hurdle.
Thank you, and through you, councillor Hutchison. I apologize, I, I thought we had a date. I'm just trying to look through the document right now. And I, I apologize if we've missed that. I, I know that Commissioner Hagnew had her end up as well. I'm not sure if she's been able to track down the date.
Ms. Eagan.
Thank you, and through you. So, recollection serves, from working on this with Commissioner Hurdle, I think that we are talking about 2022 so that we could get through the lion's share of policy work that we have on, on the books for 2021, and, and do some research. There's a couple of pieces that, moving pieces to do with, you know, depending on what the city wants to do with respect to our, our Section 37, Community Benefits, which we have to look at again, and, and where we want to go with our policy. Because certainly, you know, as a city, you know, if we're not comfortable entertaining height and density in certain areas of the city that's not contemplated now, that takes the ability to develop affordable housing units through Section 37 benefits off the table. So, something like a CIP program would be an alternative approach. And we know from recent changes with this government that inclusionary zoning is also not an option that's available to the city of Kingston at this time, until there's further legislated changes. So, I think with all of those pieces considered, we're talking about bringing a report to council that had some research and looked at other communities and some suggested ideas in 2022 on that particular recommendation.
Okay, thank you. So, two words, land banking. I didn't see anything in there with that. We had a land banking program, it worked pretty well, and I think it's something we should look at again if we really want to get not-for-profit housing off and working. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is councillor Holland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the, a few comments and then just one question. I guess, I just first wanted to address comments made by councillor McLaren regarding the, the elimination or the sort of suggested elimination of council requests for extra reports and studies. What that referred to in the original discussions at the task force was the fact that we, through our consultations with staff and with folks involved in developing all different types of housing in the city, what we heard was that the, the comprehensive zoning bylaw needed to be updated really quickly in order to facilitate the kind of housing development that we were looking for in the city. So, that recommendation to limit further requests for, was specific to policy around land use planning and around sort of specific items or specific developments so that our planning department could focus their effort on the policy work that they had to do, including the comprehensive zoning bylaw, as well as the ongoing secondary plans that we, we as a council had asked for. And so, it wasn't to fast-track development for a particular type of development. I'll remind members of council that affordable housing projects also have to go through the planning process. So, this was an attempt to do what was feasible and to listen to our staff, just as we've heard from our CIO in the past, that if we continue to bring new motions forward, something is going to give. So, we have to just recognize the capacity of our staff, that's what that was about. It's not to, it's not to, you know, to, to shut down in an extended, for, over an extended period of time, any request for further information or anything along those lines, just so you have some sense of where that came from. Um, the, I guess, the other comments I would make, just, just, just general thoughts on looking at the, the progress to date. It's very obvious that the context has changed, and, and some, some things that we didn't, well, obviously, we didn't anticipate when we were doing the work, change, changes that seemed completely unimaginable have, have happened. So, we've seen, we've seen an acceleration of some work on affordable housing, based on affordable and supportive housing, based on the emergency situation that we saw during the pandemic. And we also have seen the, really just based on pent-up demand and, and applications, lots more, lots more developments coming, coming to fruition. So, all of that to say that the, even before we get to approving this implementation plan, there've been considerable changes, and many of them really positive along the lines of what the hopes were when we were first looking at the problem of low vacancy in the city of Kingston and increased affordable housing. And obviously, everyone knows that's an ongoing council priority, and we're going to continue to work on that, that this, this implementation plan isn't the be-all and end-all in affordable housing. But, but I am happy to see the, the work that's been done and that has been pointed out in the prelude to this, this plan. I have one question, it's at the very, it's the very end point, like the very last piece that talks about, oh gosh, I lost it. Okay, it's the very end of the matrix and talks about quality and sustainability. So, I know that the asset planner tool, planning, planner tool that the city has, is used by KFHC, and I, and I understand the value of that. And this also, this, this work also suggests that the new builds will, of course, be higher quality and address the, the concern about quality in the future, quality of housing stock. But I'm curious about funding from other levels of government and just, just what the process is. So, if we're, so how, first of all, do the funds from other levels of government for this renewal housing strategy, do they flow from provincial, federal government to us, and then from us to our affordable and, and social housing providers? That's the first question.
You know, just note, councillor Ongie, with thirty seconds left on the clock, but of course, I stopped the question. So, Ms. Nordograph.
Thank you, and through you, Mayor Patterson. So, yes, as, as the city is the service manager for our social housing providers, we, if there's provincial dollars, they, they flow through us as a service manager, and then we work with the providers on, on, on flowing them those, those funds. And as an example, and I think it was referred to in the, in the matrix as well, we have received as part of the community renewal strategy, the provincial community renewal strategy, funding that we have used to support a variety of social housing providers with, with specific renovations and upgrades.
Quick follow-up. So, if, do we need to, is there anything we need to do to sort of incentivize, or are they, are they, how do we get them to use the funds and improve the quality?
Hurdle.
Um, through you, Mayor Patterson. I, I think there, there's obviously certain expectations, regardless of if it's an affordable housing project or a market housing project. So, there are just minimum standards and requirements. Every new development, we, we again have certain expectations and requirements, and quite often, there, there are also, especially, well, obviously, across the board, but for instance, when we are using federal dollars through CMHC, there are very high expectations about, for instance, accessibility and energy efficiency. I know that's a little bit wider than your specific question, but we definitely have, have processes in place to make sure that we can ensure that the quality of, of these buildings. And because we are the service manager, and we have the, these kind of agreements and funding agreements with providers, we also have that opportunity to, to, to address issues and, and work with the providers if there, there would be any issues moving forwards. And I think CIO, CIO Hurdle has something to add to that as well.
Thank you, and through Mr. Mayor. So, I, I think to your question, councillor Holland, if I understood correctly, it's also about the existing stock, and how do we, how do we make sure that our organizations, our not-for-profit can tap into the upper level of government and also city funding? Because we have a fund set aside for renovations, for social housing. I think we need to have, honestly, we need to have more dialogue with some of these organizations. I think in some cases, it may be capacity, depending on the size of the organization. Some, like KFHC, are quite large and quite capable to undertake renovations, but we have some not-for-profit that are much smaller and, and may not have the capacity to undertake some of these renovation projects. So, I think we're going to have to have more dialogue and try to find ways to better support some of these smaller organizations so that they can actually tap into these dollars and make some improvements to the existing stock.
Right, thank you.
Okay, just before I go to councillor Neil, who's next on my speakers list, just noting our time, I'm going to ask for a motion to extend the meeting until we complete report number 11, as previously discussed. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor Hill. All those in favor? Opposed? And, and that's carried. Okay, councillor Neil, you're next on the speakers list.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna echo some of what councillor Hutchison said, and I think probably councillor Stroud will nod at some of this. The secondary suites was a really interesting process nine years ago. It became a kind of political decision, not, in my mind, a really good planning decision, which districts ended up supporting secondary suites and which ones didn't. And at the time, in the name of affordable housing, I, I was fully supportive of secondary suites, and I continue to be. But the problem is that not all secondary suites lead to, as councillor Hutchison pointed out, lead to affordable housing. In, in my district, there's a six-bedroom addition that has taken up the full footprint of, of the law, and they're renting, going to be renting those at $700 a bedroom. So, in the core districts, the, not all secondary suites lead to any more affordable housing. Now, some people, particularly developers, will say to me, well, there's the trickle-down effect. If we have more- If we have more housing, regardless of what the price is, it's gonna bring down uh, the, the rent rental in the city. I've yet to see that happen in my seventeen, eighteen years on council. The reality is, it doesn't happen. And so and, and the other thing is, I totally support the idea of intensification as well. But I think we've almost become enslaved to the commitment to secondary suites and intensification. And developers bring tho- use those words and bring them to planning expecting to get total approval uh for their projects. And quite frankly, I'm not sure all of those projects benefit the neighborhoods that they're going into. We have several potential six bedroom and beyond secondary suites in Councilor Stroud's district, in my district, in Councilor Hutchison's district. And yes, we need to support affordable secondary suites. But just because it's a secondary suite and just because it's intensification, it doesn't necessarily improve the neighborhood or the community. And, and I'm going to be using more than just the idea that it's a secondary suite and therefore uh it deserves to be supported. So I'm not sure if our planners or C A O wanna comment on that, but
Yeah, Commissioner Agnew.
Thank you and through you. Certainly, um, Councilor Neil, you've made some valid comments about what we've seen transpire in the city with respect to the as-of-right zoning framework that we brought in about a year ago for second units. And what we've seen, um, which we anticipated to some degree and definitely communicated in our consultations with the province who required these changes to be made citywide without any type of restrictions from like a built form perspective. The only thing that the province allowed us to regulate with respect to second units was to do with servicing capacity. So that's why you see citywide framework for the most part that allows second units as of right in areas as long as there's not servicing capacity issues. But what we have seen is unintended consequences associated with that, especially in areas that have very generous zoning. And with the province bringing in the permissions that allow second units in detached dwellings in rear yards, we are seeing some pretty aggressive planning applications or even just building permit applications that are coming in for second units to be housed in detached dwellings in rear yards that have high bedroom counts. So from a staff perspectives, uh, this is not the intent of what the second units uh policies really were intended to achieve. So I would agree with you that there's some challenges there. And what we're working on right now at a staff level that you're going to see early in twenty twenty one um are probably some pretty tough decisions for this council to make with respect to making some changes to the zoning framework to address the issues that you're seeing that are not really what's intended when we talk about a second or additional unit in terms of having twelve, fourteen, sixteen bedrooms, which we have seen in some planning applications. Um, and there's a very good chance that we're gonna be challenged by the, by the province if we change our zoning framework. But that's certainly a matter that we're, we're gonna be discussing with, with council and the community. Uh, probably as early as February in twenty twenty one to address the specific issue that you're talking about right now.
I, I definitely look forward to that. Will, is this something in the core of the city, in the three districts that I've mentioned, could be appropriately addressed with our future, always seems to be future comprehensive zoning by law?
Um, thank you and through you. It's actually my intention to deal with it a lot quicker than you're gonna see the zoning by law uh based on, on what we're seeing as applications coming through, um impacts the neighborhoods. Um, and uh just overall concern with what we're seeing in terms of how certain parts of the market have responded to the zoning permissions and, and those impacts. Uh, certainly, the, the one way to, to really effectively deal with it is to start regulating by the bedroom, which is something we don't do now and is something that there are mixed opinions about in the planning community about its appropriateness based on human rights considerations. So again, when I talk about challenging conversations and discussions this council's gonna be faced with, that will be something that we deal with through likely some standalone amendments that staff are gonna be bringing forward for public meeting and consideration in early twenty twenty one. That will also be carried through into the comprehensive zoning by law. We're looking at regulation of parking by the bedroom um as part of the new parking standards that we've been working on. And again, we'll be going to public meeting in twenty twenty one. Um, but whether we further extend that beyond just looking at regulating uh parking uh by the bedroom, but looking at capping number of bedrooms, especially in second or additional units on properties. If, those are some of the provisions that we're seeing coming in in other communities and other communities have decided not to do it for human rights issues. So it's something that we are still researching right now and looking at possibilities. But certainly, like I said, we will be bringing that back to council through planning committee in early twenty twenty one to start the public meeting process on that to address that specific issue.
Look forward to that. Thank you.
Hey, are there any other questions or discussion? Uh, yes, Councilor Stroud.
I don't wanna take a lot more time at, at this hour, five to eleven. But si- we're, you know, I represent the near campus area. And it's pretty clear to not only myself as the counselor, but every resident in the district, uh, every neighborhood that uh, it, it, you know, some things you can count on. And one thing you can count on is if, if there's a way to put in a legal planning application to add uh bedrooms that will be rented by students because of the unlimited demand from university, it's gonna happen. So, you know, it's uh what Councilor Neil is describing and uh Commissioner Agnew is confirming is not a surprise to Sydney residents. It's been happening my entire life. So, great, we're gonna, we're gonna see some tough decisions. I hope that some of those tough decisions are gonna deal with the simple fact that relentless student enrollment expansion leads to relentless development pressures on family neighborhoods unless there's ironclad planning rules to prevent them. You see, you saw it in Ottawa, you saw it in London, you saw it in Waterloo. In Kingston, it's, it, in my district, it's, it's as dependable as the rain coming down on a rainy day. Alright, so please, let's, let's, let's put in some better rules. And let's stop wishing for things to, to happen that aren't gonna happen. You know, one thing that is hundred percent for sure is the relentless pressure. If it can be done legally, it will be done. And even, not even by the bylaw, they ask for amendments, right? It expands and expands and expands. The, the pressure is relentless. And unless you guys acknowledge that, this is gonna keep happening with the, with the housing task force, with the planning rules or the official plan or the zoning bylaw amendment. It's all caused by the same relentless pressure. Come down to my neighborhood, walk around with me, I will show you what it means. It's really, really frustrating for us that we have to live with it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so we will call the vote then on clause three. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, clause four, partnership with Kingston Community Health Centers. We will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Number five, capital status or capital project status report, third quarter twenty twenty. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Number six, annual amendment to fees and charges by law two thousand five dash ten.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson and through you. I wanna speak to this for a moment if I could and also ask a question of staff. Um, I know that I've said this before when we've looked at fees, but I think it bears repeating. I'm very uncomfortable with an increase to recreation fees, particularly sports fields of twenty percent. And then also in this report, we see a seventy-five percent increase um for rec fees concerning staffing. So with that apprehension in mind, I'm wondering if staff could explain the process by which these drastic increases were proposed? And if the organizations like baseball uh leagues and soccer leagues were consulted in this process?
Uh, Mr. Hugaboss.
I thank you, um, Mr. Mayor and, and through you. So thank you, Councilor Kylie. So um, the, the first part of the question on the twenty percent increase for uh sports fields. So that goes back to a study um over ten years ago on recovery of the actual cost for sports fields and looking at increasing those um, the fees in order to recover sixty-five percent of the costs of upkeep on sports fields. And um that would have caused a significantly sharp rise in fees over a relatively short period of time. Um, so those, those rise in fees started, I believe, in two thousand fourteen and are slowly uh getting to the point of um, of that recovery model, which is not a full cost recovery model, but endorsed a sixty-five percent. Um, what staff is, is proposing and, and will do for twenty twenty one as part of a review of fees, um, will bring back information to council in twenty twenty one to update uh where that um schedule's at. Um, we, we would not be at the sixty-five percent right now, uh but we would like to provide council with an update of, of where exactly um, the fee recovery is. Um, but at this time, we'd recommend to stay the course of that increase um to um, uh, to get to, uh, to get to that level. Uh, that, that report in twenty twenty one will also um look at an update on um ice rink fees and uh and recovery of, of the, the public tax investment um in operating those facilities. And that's mentioned in the report as well. So that'll be an update into um uh where those fees are at um relative to the, the recovery of costs and comparable to other cities as well. Um, so that, that would be the information that, that will come back to council in twenty twenty one. But for now, um, that twenty percent increase in sports fields is recommended to stay um due to, due to the recovery of, of the sixty-five percent of cost. The other question on the seventy-five percent increase, that's a, that's a recovery of cost for um um, uh booked um events such as tournaments um that require specific staff to come support um, uh, events at the arenas. So for the, the staff that are um enlisted to, to come onboard, extra staff in order to support the events, um, that is the actual true cost of that staff member to come support that paid event, whether it's a, a big weekend tournament, that, that type of thing. It's um, it's not a one-off um single ice booking type, type increase in cost.
And a follow up through you, Mayor Patterson. Uh, Mr. Hugaboss, could you speak to whether or not the different organizations who will be directly impacted by this were consulted around the increase in fees proposed?
Mr. Hugaboss.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and through you. Um, so again, the twenty percent has um been communicated over the years. It's been every year since uh twenty fourteen as part of a, a council endorsed strategy um from, from prior to twenty fourteen. Um, I don't know um specifically on the seventy-five percent of, of that. Um, and, and exactly who has been contacted or what that um uh, um, what kind of outreach has happened. I can get that information for you. Uh, but again, this is for um a large bookings that require significant, like at that significant uh ice rentals that require extra staff to come in to, to manage that workload. Um, and it's just a cost recovery of the actual staff time. Um, so it's, it's, it's not a something that has to be supported by, by taxes.
Okay, thank you. And if I could have two more questions, I'll be quick. I'm a bit confused actually now. I was unaware of the twenty fourteen study. Um, and if prices have been going up twenty percent a year for the last six years, be long shattered the sixty-five percent recovery that you mentioned in your first response. It seems like double that amount.
Um, no. So what would have needed to happen was significantly larger increase than twenty percent. So the sixty-five percent is to recover sixty-five percent of the cost of supplying and maintaining the sports fields, not the sixty-five increase of the fees. So
Thank you, sorry. That, that, okay, that does clarify that. That's fine. And then I just wanna say that I'm not against the principle of cost recovery. I think that's good fiscal management. My only concern is that it's such a drastic increase, especially at a time when many leagues would have vastly declined revenue um because of COVID. And so I won't support this tonight, um not because I'm against the principle, but I just don't think we should be pushing that down at, at the rate that it is. Seventy-five percent increase is, is very significant. And I'd also just like to compliment one part of the report. I think it's worth balancing it out that um the free fees for the municipal fee assistance program is a really good move. So I applaud that. But I, I won't be supporting it tonight. Thank you.
Next is Councilor Dord.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. I wonder if staff could um um, give some details regarding the three hundred dollar heritage permits. Um, and I, this didn't come to Heritage Committee and I wonder why that we're introducing something like that.
Commissioner Bragg.
Uh, thank you and through you. Uh, so, so Councilor Dordi, um, as you're probably aware that the her- heritage permitting system is something that the city has offered um free of charge for many years. And, and the idea behind that primarily was to promote stewardship and people purchasing um heritage properties. What we're finding um in terms of like from a staff perspective and, and looking at our cost recovery, uh, the amount of work going into uh permits and the costs internally for processing all of those applications is is probably five to six times the amount of what we were, we're looking at implementing as, as a fee to start to do some cost recovery um to assist with like ongoing uh support for the Heritage Resource Center and looking at having uh support for the staffing levels. We need to address the permit load that's coming through, but also to be able to, to get to the much um, much uh um underachieved, at least in the last year, um, policy work that we want to get done with respect to heritage, whether that's uh bringing on designations of, of more properties. Um, are also looking at uh the contemplation of additional um heritage conservation districts within the city, which are, which are identified as something that we want to, to get to. Uh, so it was, it was thinking about implementing a fee that, uh, that did some cost recovery similar to what we looked at in terms of creating a fee associated with the, the pre-application service. Um, again, to, to look at those factors that I identified.
Um, thank you. Um, I understand that the, the recovery, the need to recovery costs. But I'm a bit concerned for two reasons. One is um renovations for heritage property, we, we all know that they are more costly to begin with. So we're adding three hundred dollars uh to that cost. But also I'm concerned that this may be a deterrent for um people actually getting a permit and they might just go ahead and, and uh put new doors in and new windows in and, and you know, then ask for, for forgiveness after, which we have seen uh and do see now and then. So I wonder if you could speak to that. If, I understand there used to be actually um even like a modest fee like twenty-five dollars. And that was also, we, we got rid of that because of the um, the, the additional cost of renovations for, for heritage.
Commissioner Bragg.
Um, yeah, thank you and through you. Again, um, you know, what, what I was looking at trying to do is assessing the amount of work that it takes to process the permits from the staffing perspective. And, you know, this represented And, you know, this represented or represents maybe a, you know, 20% cost recovery related to the amount of work and looking at what we need in terms of staffing resources and this being an opportunity to to provide additional source of revenue to support those activities that I've talked about, which really all are focused on additional heritage protections. The thinking was, you know, $300 wasn't an excessive fee. Like I said, it's in line with what the pre-application fee is only for for planning applications specifically, that it would provide some cost recovery, but certainly also acknowledging that we have the Heritage Grant Program as well to support applicants with some of their their renovation costs as well. On on the side of of noncompliance, that's certainly always a possibility with having no fee. We definitely have people that go ahead and do alterations to properties every year without getting permissions from the committee, and then we're dealing with that in a retroactive manner. What we are contemplating as as part of a future report to council in 2021 would be looking at implementing an administrative monetary penalty similar to what we've been utilizing with respect to some of the COVID enforcement more frequent or more recently, but as an opportunity to have that as a preliminary level of enforcement beyond having to go through the court system. So that that's something that will be brought through the committee for for discussion and back to council in 2021. But again, looking at that as an additional tool to to deal with people that potentially go forward without obtaining the the proper permits as they do now, even with a zero fee for the the heritage alteration permissions that the way it exists now.
That's great. Thanks for that.
Next is Counsel Ostrov.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson, and and thank you, Counsel Doherty, for those questions. I know we shared the concern on behalf of the committee. And I appreciate the answers too, and I really do recognize that cost recovery is important. And so and that there's not been any for a while. I guess I hope it's an acceptable question. Is there not at any time a complimentary or a minimum conversation consultation instead of the 300? Or is it start at 300? Or is there similar to planning? Is there? Is there an allowance for an initial discussion? Is there a category?
So thanks and through you. Certainly, we provide a lot of, you know, free advice to people very regularly associated with with all of our services. The $300 fee would only be applied to people that are actually making an application for an alteration permit. So they're going through the process, which involves all the staff time, the committee time, the report preparation, the committee time itself, and then coming to council. So there is quite a bit of work that goes into that, and that's the that's the only thing the fee would would apply to is if there was a specific application that was filed. But certainly, we would continue to be working with people leading up to any type of process and giving them advice that would help them to decide what they're doing and whether or not they actually need to apply for an alteration permit or not.
Yeah, thank you very much for that. I I really appreciate it. I I think in the end, I I think it's reasonable and understandable, and I I feel the pain of with people. But I I appreciate the answers and understand it totally. Thank you.
Next is Counsel Neil.
Thank you. I share Counsel Kylie's concerns about the increases in parks and recreation. And for all of us that were on council in 2014, I'm I don't remember us ever approving the idea of increasing to this level. What I remember is our now CAO being the Commissioner of Parks and Rec. And there coming a recommendation at that time for increasing family and individual parks and rec fees and having all kinds of community pushback about it. And we ended up saying 3%. And for for several years and and CAO Hurdle can correct me if I'm wrong, but for several years, we used that 3% concept that that was the increase, the inflationary for parks and rec fees. I will say there are all kinds of things that we want full cost recovery on. Parks and recreation shouldn't be, in my mind, one of those. We should be. The community benefits from playing fields. The community benefits from from having recreational and park areas. And if we end up driving up the cost of those things so that the average family can no longer afford it, all we're going to do is is kill the 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 whole idea of affordable parks and rec. At the time, I remember getting myself in trouble because I argued that 3% made sense. But for our docs, we didn't have to subsidize yachts. And a lot of boat owners jumped all over me for making that making that statement. But that's what I firmly believe. And like Counsel Kylie, I have a real concern about this. If we have a large outside group coming to run a tournament, that's fine. I have no issue with adults running a tournament and being charged cost recovery. But I don't want to see us potentially making playing fields no longer affordable for Kingstonian families. And perhaps former Parks and Rec, former Parks Commissioner, Ms. Hurdle can comment on some of that.
CAO.
Thank you and through Mr. Mayor. So I I will provide a little bit of background. And actually, Counsel Neil, I was director at the time of recreation and leisure. So that that goes way back into 2009. So in 2009, there was a review that was done specifically for sports fields. At the time, the rates for sports field had not been reviewed in the same way that we had done for arenas to try to recuperate some of the cost that we had for arenas. So as as a director, I undertook that review and brought it to Arts Recreation Committee's policy. And it was endorsed by the implementation. You're correct. Counsel Neil, the implementation took a few years. And and it did start though. And it has been, I'm not sure if it has been implemented consistently throughout, but it has been implemented some of the years. What I would, so the, just to be clear, the 20% that's being proposed is only applicable to sports fields that are being rented by associations. It wouldn't be necessarily if a family comes in and is using a field and, you know, just playing with their kids, for example. We we don't do rentals for those. We know that people do informally use parks, which is great. It the 20% also does not apply to any of the other recreation fees. So I I just want to make sure that that counselors are are clear on that. The other fees would be essentially the 3% or would be adjusted depending on the cash handling. And as Counsel Kylie pointed out, we are proposing to actually provide free access to individuals that would qualify for the MFA program. So they would have free access to a number of recreation programs. So I I just want to provide a little bit of that background. And and I think Commissioner Huguenbos provided some rationale in terms of the cost recovery. One of the options that council does have, if it it is not comfortable with the sports field increase, council could amend that particular fee in particular to to reflect the 3% if that is the the only the only concern.
You you mentioned associations. Can I get some clarity on that? So Kings Court Baseball Association has been operating in the Kings Court area, serving medium income, low income families for years. Because they're an association, would they have to pay that additional amount? And Frontenac Baseball Association, which uses cricket field and has for generations and is affordable for families, would they, because they're an association, have to pay that higher fee?
CAO.
So thank you and through you, Commissioner Huguenbos might want to jump in in here as well. My understanding is if they are booking the field and having a specific time where they have exclusive use to play, then they would have to pay the increase in fee.
I I see Mr. Huguenbos wants to say something.
Mr. Huguenbos, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you through, just to to follow up. So CAO Hurdle is correct. So Kings Court or or KBA or Kingston Thunder, those types of baseball associations would pay. The baseball diamond rates start currently at $9 an hour for the the youngest of children. I think you're you're speaking of Counsel Neil. I don't have all the rates in front of me, but I know that's 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 one of the, that's the starting rate for for hourly rates of baseball diamonds. And that was part of the the rationale for the steady increases just to get to a a a higher level of of fee recovery or cost recovery, but not a full cost recovery, looking at getting up to 65% cost recovery.
I would like to move an amendment, if there's a secondary support from council, that we defer the playing field portion of this to seek more information regarding fee levels. I appreciate that that Commissioner Hurdle has suggested that we may want to make it what was for years, the 3% for that. I know we're in COVID. I know it's a it's a tough time, but I don't want to kill neighborhood sports.
So Counsel Neil, can I just ask for some clarification of what your motion is?
I believe, and you may want to rule on this, I believe I can move deferral of one portion of this, or do I have to defer the whole report in order to get that information?
You can you can move a motion to defer. But I just want to clarify what the what the time and the place is and and of course, the purpose. It's an emotion to defer. So exactly what is that?
Motion to defer until, and I'm going to, I know we have some busy meetings in January. So to a January council meeting to seek more information on the on on the effect of the increased fees on playing fields.
So.
Does that make sense? It's been a long day.
So I I understand the motion to defer, but I've just just trying to understand, is it? Is it just a straight deferral? Because I think staff have given us the information what the impact is. Is it just, we just want to think about it to January, which is fine. I just want to make sure that this is this is clear what this motion to defer is.
Perhaps. I missed something, but Mr. Huguenbos mentioned the amount that would it would affect one age group. I would like to know how much it would affect leagues. And I'm not sure that that information specifically is within the report.
Okay, so so is that information that's not available tonight? Can I just get a signal from?
Yes.
CAO.
Thank you and through Mr. Mayor. So what I would suggest, considering Counsel Neil's question, is that we bring an additional information to council that would outline essentially what some of these organizations are currently paying and what they would be paying based on the 20% and then based on the 3%. So that would provide counselors with a list of all of these organization and the type of usage. I I think that might help to clarify some of the questions that Counsel Neil has raised.
It would definitely clarify it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a a motion to defer the fees for sports fields until January for staff to be able to provide additional information on what what they are currently paying with what the 20% increase versus other potential increases. Okay, so moved by Counsel Neil, seconded by Counsel Kylie. Is there any discussion to time, place, or direction? Okay. So we will call the vote on the motion to defer. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So now we have the the rest of the amendments to fees and charges except for the sports fields. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the balance? Okay, Counsel Hutchison.
I just want to say that I want to thank staff for removing the fees from municipal fee assistance programs, program users in this for open membership programs. And I think that's a really good move for that community health. And it's consistent with a number of measures, some brought to us by a former director of Parks and Recreation on with Ms. Kidd, going back quite a ways. So I think that's really good. It's in this time of COVID in particularly, and it's good for community health and for people for the mental health of the community as well. So thank you for that.
Thank you. We will call the vote then on clause six. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Thank you. Onto report number nine from Planning Committee.
Moved by Counsel Neil, seconded by Counsel Kylie, that report number nine from the Planning Committee be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause, approval of zoning bylaw amendment 168, 172 Wellington Street and 99 Brock Street. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Report number 10 from the Arts Recreation Community Policies Committee.
By Counsel Hutchison, seconded by Counselor, I'm trying to remember somebody else who's on Arts and Recreation because Counsel O'Neal isn't here. Counsel McLaren, thank you, Counsel McLaren, that report 10 from the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee be received and adopted.
Those in favor? Oh, sorry. It's just the one clause, sorry before. One clause, approval of the Art Kingston Arts Council Plan for Administration of Arts Funding for the Corporation and City of Kingston in 2021. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, and then we have report number 11 received from the Nominations Committee that the following appointments to the Economic Development Corporation approved. So that would be David Carnegie, Ryan and Vivian Scott, Lindsay Wise, and Jillian Waters. Any discussion? We will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries. Okay, so that takes us to the end of report number 11. It's 1129. So with that, we will recess until 6:00 PM tomorrow, and then we will continue with the rest of our agenda. Thanks, everybody, and have a good night. We'll see you at 6:00 PM tomorrow.